And the people of Guam relative to the ongoing military buildup forces. We can do one of two things. We can spend a lot of time in this session, which we don't have, discussing a resolution to which we've already passed and is consistent with the legislature's policy with respect to how we want to approach this military buildup. And we've learned, Mr. Speaker, that they only have four pillars. And what's gravely missing is the fifth pillar, which addresses the longstanding historical injustices. I move that it be placed on the consent calendar. This resolution was co-authored by 14 members. And as we know, the consent calendar is a fast-track process to discuss matters to which we already are in agreement. And so the interest of time-
Is there an objection to placing this on the consent calendar? Hearing no objection.
And then my next motion, Mr. Speaker, is to place that resolution in the voting file when we get to the voting file. Because it's evident that several of us will be joining. Governor Cavill is head delegate, is head of this delegation to this Washington, D.C. meeting, and so I moved that be placed in the voting file.
I'm placing it on the voting file. Any objection? Hearing none. So ordered.
My next motion under motions is to place Bill 34-31, is to suspend discussions, rather, on Bill 48, and to place Bill 34-31 on the top of the second reading file. And this bill is an act to amend Section 11306 of Article III, Chapter 11, Title VII of the GCA relative to the statute of limitations for civil actions involving child sexual abuse. Mr. Speaker, I want to make it perfectly clear. There is no attempt to block your bill. I want to make it perfectly clear that this matter was discussed in the Committee on Rules, but no motion was made. The individual who said that she was not there to make a motion?
Um-
I have an attendance sheet that shows that she was present.
The motion, we're just going to hear your motion. We don't need to hear the argument.
Sure you do. Sure you do. Because you've made certain allegations and assumptions with respect to this bill. I need to say to my colleagues that we need to place this bill on the agenda because there's-
And I'm asking whether or not there's any objection to placing it on the agenda.
And then we can discuss the genesis of this bill and how it evolved if my motion is carried. Correct?
I imagine we'll get to that. There's one motion that's on the floor, and the motion is to place Bill 34 on the agenda. Is there an objection to placing Bill 34 on the-
On the top of the agenda, Mr. Speaker. On the top of the agenda. I would like for this matter to be discussed immediately. The motion, to be clear, is to place this bill on the top of the second reading file.
There is currently a bill under consideration that we're in the midst of, where we recessed yesterday to allow some people to, um, I haven't heard back from the two parties as to whether or not it's been addressed.
This is exactly what I'm talking about. Now that there's a motion to move the bill on the agenda, you're saying that we're discussing something else. The motion is in order, and it's not to be debatable.
Can I ask the clerk what was, what we broke for him last night?
Does it matter? I made a motion to suspend those discussions. The motion is to place this bill on the top of the second reading file. Obviously, when we get to the top of this, on the second reading file, we're going to discuss this bill. Bill 48 can be discussed afterwards, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I know we did recess yesterday so that I'll be able to get some information from procurement office. I've not gotten a call yet, so therefore I will not be able to report to the body. So I do not object to the motion to place then Bill 34 on the top of the agenda, to suspend and put aside Bill 48 until such time that I have the information for our body.
All right, then, um, Madam Speaker. I'm only up here because I thought this was 48.
Can't we dispose of the motion before you leave the speakers?
I wanted to speak too.
It's a non-debatable procedural motion, and that was your ruling. You said we're not going to discuss the motion.
All right.
So are you going to accept the motion or not?
I rise.
Madam Speaker, I rise to point of order.
Senator Respechel, please set your point of order.
I'm trying to assist the sponsor of this legislation, Bill 34, bring the bill to the floor. I made a motion that we, we have Bill 34 be placed on the top of the second reading file, and I ask that you-
If I'm not mistaken, Senator Respechel, it was gavelled in, so it was, if I'm not mistaken, it was gavelled in. So please proceed.
It was gavelled in, but there was no on the motion. So, okay, just to be clear, it was gavelled in. So I, then we're now on the second reading file.
Senator Respechel, you still have-
What are you doing there? You called the sponsor, right?
Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized on, we're on top, we're on the second reading right now.
I'd ask for a few-minute recess to allow the clerk to distribute to the members the copy of the, um, of the committee for-
Yes.
Or at least a copy of the bill.
We'll recess, five-minute recess. The legislature is back in session, and we have rearranged the second reading file, and we do have on top of the agenda Bill Number 34. And I recognize the author, Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 34 to the third reading file, and I'd last, ask for an opportunity to address the body.
And you'd like to speak on it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Please continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first, I'd like to again thank the Chairman of the Committee on Public Safety and Law Enforcement, and the 11 members, I keep forgetting that there are 11 members on that committee, 11 members of the Committee on Public Safety, and the one additional person who attended the public hearing on Super Bowl Monday. They sat through three and a half hours of testimony. I will admit publicly, I was not on island on that day. I was not, I didn't attend the hearing. And after all the chiding I got yesterday about dominating roundtables and hearings, it may have been just as well that I wasn't at the, at the public hearing, because then it can't be said that I was the one that tried to direct the hearing, or to try to direct the way the testimony went, or how, how, more importantly, how all of you perceive the testimony. And I was very heartened to hear that after the hearing, that when the committee report was circulated, that the committee unanimously, unanimously, 11 members of one committee all voted to pass. It wasn't reported out, there wasn't a vote or signature not to pass. All 11 members of the Public Safety Committee voted to pa, um, to pass Bill 34. And I want to thank all 11 members and the chairman for their sitting down and thinking through this issue. Because this bill was introduced in the last legislature, and in the last legislature, unfortunately, it didn't receive as widespread support. Maybe it was because I was at that hearing. But when they were able to hear all the compelling testimony that was given by the members of the community, and the testimony that has been received, and I know the chairman and some of you have been receiving it just recently, of the young people who have submitted testimony in support of this bill, I want to acknowledge and recognize the fact that there were numerous, or at least I have received, and I'm sure that the chairman has received during the hearing, subsequent to the hearing, dozens of emails of testimony by individuals in support of the passage of Bill 34. And so I wanted to acknowledge those young people that took the time to testify. Madam Speaker, I know in reading the committee report, since I was not there, in reading the committee report, that there were two individuals that testified against the bill. I know that there was testimony by one citizen in the community who had issues about the veracity of the complaints, and I will be circulating an amendment to address that issue. I'll get to that in a minute. Madam Speaker, but there was also only one person that submitted written testimony in opposition, and that was by the Archdiocese. I want to make it very clear, Madam Speaker, that this legislation was not and is not addressed at the Roman Catholic Church or the Archdiocese of Ghana. Unlike the reporting bill that I introduced in the last session, there is nothing in here that makes mention of any faith, faith-based church or anything. It's a very simple piece of legislation, providing for an exception for a period of two years within which the statute of limitations with, to bring actions on civil actions against perpetrators is proposed. And unfortunately, sometimes I have a feeling that because I wear only one contact so that I can read and yet be able to see at a distance, that people, and it's true, my one eye is closed more than the other, and so I kind of look quite Keithan. And so people aren't exactly sure exactly where I'm looking, or what I'm staring at when I'm speaking to them, but it's because I only have one contact in. And so people have a tendency to feel like I'm trying to target them. I'm just trying to protect the children of this island. You all know I have no children. So I have no vested interest in trying to protect my child, my son, or my daughter. But I have to amend that today. During these next two weeks, I'm playing Mr. Mom, because my sister and I had to switch places so she could go back to my mother, and I'm here. And now I am ward of a 15 and a 14-year-old. And so I have a concern about their safety in this community. And I want to make sure that they are not harmed. If any of you have seen them, they are beautiful, and it's not because I'm a gloating uncle, but they are. And I want to make sure that they are not harmed and in any way affected because some predator in this community decides to deny them their youth. I want them to be able to achieve their full potential. Because what happens when a child is sexually abused and is denied their childhood, that affects them for the entire rest of their lives. I don't know all of you as well as I probably should, and I probably don't go around and lobby as much as I should, but there are a few of you that I felt close enough to send an article that I had found in Huffington Post about a month ago. It was an article that had run in the Huffington Post about this brilliant young man, in his late twenties, early thirties. He was a PhD candidate at Yale in applied mathematics. Not political science like I did, which almost anybody can get through, but applied mathematics, Madam Chairman. He was a brilliant young man. In fact, he was so brilliant that he had developed, made a substantial amount of money because he developed one of those apps that you have, that you can get for your phone or your iTunes. He had developed an app to be able to do something, and he had made a considerable amount of money, and was now back at Yale studying to get his PhD in applied mathematics. About two months ago, he committed suicide. He committed suicide, and he left a 4,000-word suicide note. I didn't count the words. Huffington Post counted the number of words that he used. But he had left a 4,000-word suicide note. And when I read the, when I read the note online, it succinctly explained and elucidated all the problems that I have felt over the last 50 years, and my inability to be able to bond, and everything else that I have suffered over the last 50 years. He was able to articulate all those issues in this 4,000-word essay. I mean, not essay, suicide note. And I thought, how tragic, that someone with this brilliance, this gift, and this promise cut his life short because he could not figure out how, in spite of his brilliance, his ability to be able to work applied mathematics, his ability to be able to create apps, to be able to make millions before his age, before he became 30, was not able to figure out how he could fit into this community because he had been sexually abused by camp counselors as a child. This piece of legislation is to address all, all sexual predators, regardless of what they wear, whether they're camp counselors in shorts, U.S. Olympic Committee coaches in their Speedos, priest in their Roman garb and collar, whatever. It's to address all of them. And it's to address, more importantly, the perpetrators of most of the sexual abuse that occurs in our community. And that's by members of our own families. And I know that people have a hard time in accepting sometimes what I say for fear, wondering whether or not has, I have political motivations or some kind of motive. So please allow me, Madam Speaker, to just read a letter that was submitted to the good chairman, explaining, and with someone with credentials not much better than mine, in addressing this. And this was addressed to the Honorable Adolfo Palacios, the Chairman of the Committee on Public Safety. And it was written on the letterhead of Cardozo, Benjamin J. Cardozo School of Law, and it's signed by Marshley Hamilton, a professor there. And she writes, "I commend to Senator Palacios, 'Dear Senator Palacios, I commend you and the committee for taking up Bill 34-31, which would establish a two-year window of opportunity for child sex abuse victims to file civil claims even if the previous statute of limitations has run. There are untold number of hidden child predators who are preying on one child after another because the statute of limitations have been configured to give them that opportunity. This bill would put Guam in the forefront of child protection. This is a sunshine law for children. There is an epidemic of child sex abuse around the world. At least one in four children, girls, is sexually abused, and at least one in five boys. Sadly, 90% never go to the authorities, and the vast majority of claims expire before the victims are capable of getting to court. Most victims are abused by family or family acquaintances. This bill would protect the children of Guam by making it possible for victims to come forward and identify their perpetrators in a court of law. It would also bring delayed, but welcome justice to these victims.'" Madam Speaker, I don't need to repeat the stories that we have seen in the Guam paper, not from the websites, from the Huffington Post, or from the New York Times, but of the abuse that is occurring on this island. Yesterday, and I commend you for your comments this morning, Madam Speaker, on Bill 33, and the importance of what we had done in that, in that bill. But it is occurring, in yesterday's paper, last week's paper, we saw the story a month ago of a young girl that had been sexually abused by her, her mother's boyfriend, and after he got arrested, the mother went and bailed him out. That's what's happening in this community, Madam Speaker. It's not in New York, it's not in Boston or some strange place. It's here in Guam that this is happening. And the reason for that is because there are still hundreds of predators in this community who are out there, who people have not specifically identified or have not been identified. I know this legislature has on several occasions over the past addressed the issue of the sex offender registry. Probably should be renamed Sex, Sexual Predator Registry. At least supposedly with that, with the 52 that were, that they sought out to arrest for them not registering, we'd be able to know who these people are. And when you know that their names are on that registry, you know that you don't leave your little two-year-old godson, grandson, or my 13, 14-year-old niece, or my 15-year-old niece with, with any of them, or anywhere near them, because they're on that registry. Unfortunately, there are thousands who are on this island who have not been identified or have been shielded by family because of the Mamalau, or whatever else that goes on of not wanting to come forward and speak about it. This legislature took a brave step forward with 33 to remove the statute of limitations prospectively forward. But we have 60 years, 70 years, the people that are out there that are still perpetrating. After we dealt with 33 the other day, I had several emails, one from a young lady that all of you received emails from Hawaii, who had been a victim of sexual abuse within one of the relatives within the family, and she was fully supportive of this so that she could protect her nieces that are still around this perpetrator, but to be able to get that done. I also got an email from a young man who I see at the gym on occasion, who works out at the gym as much as he can because it's the only way that he is able to work out the anger that he feels for the abuse that he suffered at the hands of the man that was married to his, his mother at one point, not his father, not his biological father. But months ago, when, when I first brought this to, in the last legislature, he came forward to me in an email and told me about the fact that he and his siblings were all abused by, six of them were abused by their stepfather. And he had spoken to his siblings about the fact that they should support me and this legislature in passing window legislation so they could get civil, get a civil act, action against that person. Not because he had deep pockets and they were going to make millions from it, he's probably judgment-proof, and they'll get nothing from it. But they will be able to do what one of our colleagues was able to say the other day, of understanding that when we have the opportunity to make a difference, to protect a child, if it means we have to speak up and admit that it happened to us, then we will admit it, just so people understand that it's real, and it's not a figment of B.J.'s wild imagination or some mean vendetta that he has. It's real. And so he works out, and he sent me an email the other day that he was really excited about the fact that 33 went through and was wondering what was happening with 34. I said, "Well, in due time, we will address it." But he wants to be able to protect all the children that this man is moving from household to household. But there's no way of being able to point that out, because if you went to the police at this point, and he did, they said, "No, it's way past the statute of limitations on the criminal action. There's nothing they can do about it." And all the stories that we've read in the paper in the last couple of days of the one, the young man who had been sexually abused 10 years ago, and the little nine-year-old that, that had been sexually abused by this person four or five years ago, I guess it was, in the story, the statute of limitations has run on their civil action against that We've addressed it criminally for perspective, but now we've just got to be able, though we're not going to be able to put them on this, on the sexual offender registry, at least through civil action, we'll be able to be able to point out who these people are in this community who have been preying, and I hate to use that word, who have been victimizing children in various households, and being able to do it with impunity because they know that the law is on their side. That's the importance of Bill 34. Let me continue to read on what Professor Hamilton says. By way of introduction, I hold the Paul R. Verquille Chair of Public Law at Benjamin N. Cardozo School of Law, where I specialize in church-state relations and constitutional law. My most recent book, Justice Denied: What America Must Do to Protect Its Children, makes the case for statute limitation reform in the child sexual abuse arena. I am the leading expert on the history and constitutionality of retroactive statute limitations with respect to child sex abuse, and have advised many child sex abuse victims on constitutional issues." And then in cap, she writes, "There are three compelling public purposes served by window legislation. One, the identification of previously unknown child predators to the public so that other children will not be abused in the future. Two, giving child sex abuse survivors justice. And three, remedying the wrong done to child sex abuse survivors caused by an overtly, overly short statute of limitations that resulted in keeping child sex abuse secret and that aided perpetrators." She continues to write, "I've been involved in statute limitations reform in numerous states. This is-" This is the only means of identifying child predators. As Professor Timothy Leighton has documented, civil tort claims have been the only means by which survivors of clergy abuse have been able to obtain any justice." And she cites the book that he wrote on the Harvard Press. Legislative reform of statute limitations for child sex abuse victims is on the rise. This week alone, there are hearings in Guam and Hawaii. Bills that would eliminate, extend, or create windows for statute limitations covering child sex abuse have been pending or have recently passed in Massachusetts, Connecticut, Virginia, Florida, New Jersey, and Oregon. Information on the statute of limitations for child sex abuse can be found on the website. Statute limitations reform is one tried and true means that will identify the many hidden child predators who are grooming other children right now. The window in California led the public, to the public identification of three hundred perpetrators previously unidentified. Delaware also enacted a window which led to the public identification of dozens of perpetrators previously hidden. Given that most child predators, I mean perpetrators, abuse many children over the course of their lives, window legislation does far more than create justice for victims in the past. It also forestalls future abuse of today's children. Many claim that window legislation leads to bankruptcy in institutions, of institutions as irresponsible. First, only two bankruptcies have followed window legislation, one in San Diego and one in Wilmington. In both cases, the bankruptcy was voluntary bankruptcy, which was intended to protect assets and avoid trials that would have revealed the Roman Catholic hierarchy's secret regarding their role in, under endangering children. These bankruptcies were not filed because of the dioceses were actually indigent. In San Diego, the bankruptcy court publicly stated the diocese was not honest in its actual wealth and there was no justification for the bankruptcy filing. The Wilmington bankruptcy was just settled and the settlement includes remuneration for victims of the diocese cover-up for child sex abuse predators and, just as important, an agreement to release the identities of those priests who have been accused of abuse. The window legislation in California brought justice to a large number of victims, exposed the identities of more than three hundred perpetrators, and did not result in cuts in church services or even make a dent in the ambitious plans for new cathedrals. Rather, the settlements were paid out of insurance proceeds and the sale of properties not dedicated to religious use. Some have argued the retroactive legislation is unconstitutional. While such an implication was true in the nineteenth century, it is no longer an accurate description of federal constitutional law as the United States Supreme Court has explained, quote, "The presumptions against statutory retroactivity had special force in an era in which courts tended to view legislative interference with property and contract rights In this century, legislation has come to supply the dominant means of legal ordering and circumspection in given ways to greater deference to legislative actions," and that's U.S. Supreme Court case Landgraf versus U.S. Film Products and also Republic of Austria versus Altman. The majority of states have not found retroactive limitations unconstitutional." And she goes through dozens of sites. Madam Speaker, I read that letter because I know that at the hearing, that one of the person testifying from the archdiocese was concerned about the fact that it would bankrupt the archdiocese. I was not the one that brought up the issue. It was brought up at the hearing and I just wanted to read that from somebody else, not me, to be able to make a case about the fact that that's unfounded. But at any rate, I just wanted to be able to make that statement about what this is all about. If the perpetrators were only within that organization, that might be some concern. But the majority of them, dozens of them are outside. In fact, according to the archdiocese, they claim that there aren't any pedophiles here. That's at least their public statement. I have to take them at their word. But in the newspapers, we're seeing that there are dozens of them outside in this community and we have to determine who they are and we have to identify them and put them away, not, we can't put them away criminally for things that happened in the past, but at least be able to know that we don't allow our little, our little sons or our little daughters or nieces or nephews to go to them. I note that there's, there's some concern about time. I want to address the other issue. And if I could get everybody to, can I? I know there was issue about trying to address whether or not there was any protection for the perpetrators. Why we want to protect them, I have no idea. But I understand that there has been some discussion about concern for it. So what I have circulating, Madam Speaker, is an amendment that I'd like to move to add a new section to Bill 34. And in it, I propose a procedure by which we have, we protect against the publication of alleged perpetrators without having a safeguard. And Madam Speaker, I'm not, I leave it to you whether or not you want me to read the amendment on the air or if you'd like to take a few minutes to allow the members to read it.
Senator, I think it'd be important to go through the sections and I think because it's quite extensive, if we can go through each item.
Okay. I just, okay. I, no, I think it's great because I really want to have the listening audience to understand that what we have here is a very meticulous protection system and I would like to go through it. And this is how it goes. There'll be a new Section 1130650, Certificates of Merit. Every plaintiff, at the time an action is filed pursuant to Section 2 of this bill, shall file certificates of merit as follows. The certificate of merit shall be executed by the attorney for the plaintiff and by a licensed mental health practitioner selected by the plaintiff declaring respectively as follows and setting forth the facts which support the declaration. One, that the attorney has reviewed the facts of the case, that the attorney has consulted with at least one mental health practitioner who the attorney reasonably believes is knowledgeable of the relevant facts and issues involved in the particular case, and that the attorney has concluded on the basis of that review and consultation that there is reasonable and meritorious cause for the filing of the action. The person consulted may not be a party to the litigation. Two, that the mental health practitioner is not treating and has not treated the plaintiff and that the practitioner has interviewed the plaintiff and is knowledgeable of the relevant facts and issues involved in the particular action and has concluded on the relevant facts and issues involved in the particular action, has concluded on the basis of his or her knowledge of the facts and issues, that in his or her professional opinion, there is reasonable basis to believe that the plaintiff had been subject to child sexual abuse. That the attorney is unable to obtain consultation required and one because of statute limitations would repair certificates required and one and two could not be obtained before the impairment of action. If a certificate is executed pursuant to this paragraph, the certificate required shall be filed within sixty days after filing the complaint. And there is further protection, Madam Speaker. Where certificates are required, the attorney for the plaintiff shall execute a separate certificate of merit for each defendant named in the complaint. And I want this part to be completely understood because I know that some people were concerned about, well, it's going to be out in the press that so-and-so filed against somebody else. This next section, I think, addressed that. In any action, no defendant may be served and the duty to serve a defendant with a process does not attach until the court has reviewed the certificates of merit filed with respect to that defendant and has found in camera, just so everybody understands what that means, the judge will review this in his or her chamber, will review the public health, I mean, the mental health professionals' assessment and the attorney's assessment of the facts, and none of this is out in public yet. They can't be serving it on a defendant until the judge says it can be. With, and has found in camera based solely on the certificate of merit, that there is reasonable and meritorious cause for filing of the action against that defendant, at that time, the duty to serve the defendant with a process shall attach. All right? This is, for those of you that have been in public safety, this is like the affidavit of probable cause that has to be approved by the judge before he signs off on the arrest warrant. And it doesn't go public yet until after he has reviewed it and has looked at all of the facts in the case. To protect against violation of this, a violation of this section may constitute unprofessional conduct and may be grounds for discipline against the attorney. So I want to make sure that, if there are any unscrupulous out there who want to just move forward without filing, this is going to be basis for unprofessional conduct. At any time after the action is filed, the plaintiff may apply to the court for permission to amend the complaint to substitute the name of the defendant or defendants for the fictitious names as follows. The application shall be accompanied by a certificate of corroborative fact executed by the attorney for the plaintiff. The certificate shall declare that the attorney has discovered one or more facts corroborative of one or more of the charging allegations against the defendant or defendants and shall set forth in clear and concise terms the nature and substance of the corroborative fact. If the corroborative fact is evidenced by the statement of the witness, anyway, this goes through the whole, and so I am proposing that this amendment be a new section to Bill 34 to address some of the apprehension I understand that some members may have about the fact that fictitious or uncooperated, unsubstantiated complaints may be filed against defendants and that defendants will be unduly defamed prior to any kind of, any kind of review. And, so Madam Speaker, I offer the, this--
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. What I'm going to do then is I'm going to have a brief recess, or rather not brief, but to allow the members then to read it again on their own before we proceed with any discussion.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak on the amendment? Senator Panglin, you're recognized.
This is my seat, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I am a little, I certainly understand the rationale for the need for the amendment in terms of the proposal. I am, of course, very comforted by the fact that the amendment is absolutely provides the opportunity to confine any damage that may occur from false accusations and it will give great pause to people willing to come forward or to any attorney willing to take any case. I mean, you literally put yourself on the line to, and the standards that being set in here, such as the need to corroborate the evidence, corroborate the fact, is all part of filing the lawsuit and allowing the lawsuit to proceed. So in that respect, you know, we, we are, the good author is trying to ensure the protection of both the guilty and the innocent, almost, which to me is, you know, a little bit disturbing that we have somebody, something here. And it really is demonstrate, I think, the struggle of trying to do this kind of, develop this kind of policy and put it into law. On one hand, I think the criteria being set here will protect some innocent people. On the other hand, it also will be, will protect some guilty people. And so what do we do? How do we reconcile this? You know, in one of the testimonies of the opposition to this window legislation, most especially proposed as on the floor without this amendment, was that the legislation will not protect one child. There's a big, I go back to the Ni Noya Kino because I really liked that example of, you know, no corruption, no poverty. And so the words, "window legislation will not protect one child." It's very different than window legislation will not protect a child, you know? And I think that quote in that testimony was crafted very, I marvel at that choice of, those choice of words because it could be, it will not protect a child because that's really what we want to do. We want to protect all children. We want to protect a child, all children, not one child. And the word they used was "one." And I find that, I find great distinction in looking at that and seeing how that statement is clothed by all the other arguments. You know what? I'm gonna, on this one, I think I'll just, I'll defer to the author, but I am disturbed and a little bit taken aback and in terms of the effect that this would have on people that may want to come forward after all these years, that they're coming forward is not only for themselves, it's not only to heal themselves, but I truly believe that anybody that comes forward with this kind of history and abuse at the hands of the powerful, because there is always a powerful and a powerless situation when this happens. And, you know, the average time that a child sex abuse victim will come forward is thirty-two years. It'll be thirty-two years since the day that, that's, that's the history, those are the statistics. The average age by the time they reconcile that it's not their fault, that it wasn't because of their doing, was about forty-five years. So that whole struggle to come to the realization, you're going to come forward because you're no longer powerless, is still very, very real in terms of there's still somebody out there that when it happened to you, there was a powerful force against you, the powerless, and that's why it happened to you. And that's what these people in position of power use over the position of innocent victims that are powerless and they take advantage of that. And I'm not sure that this amendment and the way that it's crafted evens out that balance of power so that we are now having a victim come forward and feel power, has the power within themselves to take on these people who are still very powerful, who may have even become more powerful over the years. And it is their intent that when you kind of-- And it is their intent that when you kind of get to that point, that you will face somebody that's obviously more powerful than you are. It is not just for yourself, it is the other victims, because I don't think there's ever been a case of Czechoslovakia child abuse where only one child, over the years, most especially when it's coming out years and years later, I don't think there's ever been a child abuse case in which only one child was abused. You will always guarantee that anybody who has abused one child has abused numerous others. The behavior, where even to the point where we think it's not even, and it's not to give an excuse, but there may even be, you know, some genetic disposition on this. But always, always, I think it's the mind and the rational forces that can overcome them. And so I'm not going to say that, you know, that that's going to be an excuse for it, because you can't, the dispositions are there, but, so that, you know, again, Madam Speaker, I'll defer to the author, who has researched and worked with these issues, you know, over the years as a member of a judge sitting on the family court, who has seen it happen as the testimony that he's given with regards to his own personal experiences with this subject matter, and his willingness, I guess you might want to say, to make sure that the importance of doing something like this is such that we will turn this ship in a different direction, in a little bit more different direction, but at least we're still going forward, and we're not going to go backwards. So I guess that's something I'm sure he struggled with in terms of presenting this amendment, but, and something that I have and I struggle with in, you know, looking at it and seeing, is this the proper amendment to achieve that objective? I'll defer that to him, and thank you very much for the opportunity to talk on this.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I agree with the previously retired speaker on his concerns with regards to what this amendment proposes. I agree as well that while this amendment helps to, for lack of a better term, satisfy the concerns with regards to how do you protect those that are innocent from frivolous action. First, and I must state that, as we did in Bill 33, if you did the wrong, then there's got to be action taken against you. And we addressed that in 33. And I'll save that argument for later on down the road, but in speaking about this amendment here, it's pretty lengthy. And I must say that it appears to be pretty cutting-edge, which now, my concern here is, will this pass judicial muster?
Would you like the Vice Speaker to respond to that question?
Well, no, no, and that's some of the questions I have, and maybe, okay, and then if the author would yield to this.
Vice Speaker, do you yield?
This is not new legislation, Madam Speaker. This is legislation taken from the California statute, which was passed in 2001. It went up to the California Supreme Court, was upheld. It was used as the basis by which there were numerous, numerous actions brought in California as a result of it. And the retiring speaker was correct. Having to go through this whole thing, I mean, it is an onerous process, and I admit that it's onerous, but I thought everybody was concerned, I'm surprised, because every, there were 11 people that said the bill looked good as it was. I tried to make it a little more ironclad, and all of a sudden, people are saying, oh, I'm trying to make sure that there is no way around, I mean, no way of it being misused to have an in-camera review by the judge before anything is done, in the same way that those of you that are familiar with public safety, the judge has in-camera reviews of your affidavits of probable cause before your warrants of search, affidavits before your arrest warrants. It has been, it was taken up in California. It went up on appeal, and it was upheld.
And I thank the Speaker for that. And when I say that with regards to the judicial muster and everything, and I recognize it was in 2001, but I also recognize, and pardon the pun and pardon the offensive for the attorneys that are here, but for every attorney that exists on this planet, there exists that many opinions. My other concern with regards to this, and don't get me wrong, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the effort in being able to separate, and this is a good way to be able to separate, the frivolous from the fact. There's just that whole process. But my concern now is it appears to be a trial before the trial. Recognizing, yes, if you're going to, if there's going to be comparisons between the criminal and the civil suits, the standard of proof is different. Whereas criminal trial, the defendant can just sit there, keep his mouth shut, and it's the burden, it becomes the burden of the people to be able to prove that that person committed the offense beyond reasonable doubt. It's not that strict in the civil side. As a matter of fact, it behooves the defendant to say something. And in this process of being able to separate out between the frivolous and the factual, there's a whole process that, and we want to compare it to a preliminary hearing, and we want to compare it to a grand jury process. Even in a grand jury process, once that's done, my standard of proof as a law enforcement officer is much higher when I have to then take it to court. Not going to be the same in civil side. And although it may sound that I oppose the amendment, I'm concerned of what this will provide in its totality. Once this amendment is accepted and is put into the body, then it changes. But in the effort too of wanting to make it a better amendment, I'd like to proffer on page two of the amendment in Section D, it says, "A violation of this section may constitute unprofessional conduct and may be grounds for disciplinary, discipline action against the attorney." A violation of this section may, no. And if it constitutes unprofessional conduct, may be the grounds? I'd like to strengthen that. And if the attorney violates any subsection, any section of this law in this process, it's not "may," I would like to change that "may" to "shall." So that it then now reads, "A violation of this section shall constitute unprofessional conduct and shall be the grounds for discipline, action against the attorney." This puts even the attorney on notice. You better cross your Ts and dot your Is. Better recognize that just as much as we want to make sure this is proven, you're not going to do anything frivolous, you're not going to be... How many times have we seen, and as far as actions taken in a court, where either the defendant, the individual, the defendant or the plaintiff gets blamed, but never the When in fact, the plaintiff and the defendant realize, in most cases, wholly on the advice of the attorney. So I want to hold that attorney, this attorney, to a higher standard, to a high standard. So I proffer that we change the two "may's" that are in that section to "shall."
Senator, I understand that, but then if you want, if you can go down to G, where it says the court may also order?
That would be, I will take it a section at a time.
Okay, I understand. Thank you then. On the amendment, on page two, subsection D, to change the words "may" to "shall." Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Then, Madam Speaker, with regards to what you have pointed out, as far as G.
Third line from the bottom?
Third line from, yes, and I'm just... "If the court finds there has been a failure to comply with the section, the court may order a party or parties attorney or both to pay any reasonable expenses, including attorney fees incurred by the defendant for whom a certificate of merit should have been filed." And I want that changed from "may" to "shall."
On the amendment, page two, subsection G, the third line from the bottom where it says "section," the court delete "may," strike out, and put the word "shall." On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, I recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I will admit that this language is really hard for me to understand. I've read and I've reread and I'm over listening, or I'm listening to conversations that helped me better understand how this actually, I think, actually will provide a sense of support and comfort to a person stepping forward to right wrong. I think if someone years down decides, I finally have to confront this and I want to move forward, that person knew that there was going to be an attorney, that there is going to be a mental health practitioner, and that everything was really detailed and focused upon, that it's in the, it's in a room, chambers, and that there's really strict rules to all of that, there might be actually a sense of security. And so on one hand, while it's been suggested we might be sending folks away and scaring them more, I suggest that we might actually be offering a sense of comfort. You know, Madam Speaker, in the first quarter alone on Guam, we've had 396 abuse cases of our children on our island, and 88% of those cases were sexual abuse cases. Our literature shows us that 90% of all abuse cases are never even reported. And I just think that this really, that Bill 34 and the amendment that we're talking about right now will strengthen the avenues for our growing families to step forward, to help them feel better, and to help them to get the kind of treatment, to help the people who should be held accountable and responsible, to put them in the front. And so while I certainly appreciate the amendments that were just made by Senator Blas, because it does, again, strengthen the idea that this is very serious business. It's nothing that's frivolous, it's nothing that's just, oh, well, oh, well, it's just that kid talking again. But this puts, I think, a real serious focus on what's going on and what should be happening to help that person move forward. So I stand in favor of the amendment, but again, I'm just saying that it's a little difficult for the everyday layperson to understand, and maybe that's not, maybe it's not so important for the everyday layperson to understand law. I'm not, I'm not sure, but as an everyday person, or maybe that's where the education of the law comes into place, where then the, it's not marketing, but it's, that's when our CPS agency, our public health agency, will put this into language that everybody can understand. Maybe that's where that comes into play, I'm thinking. But I stand in support of the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I was afraid that I was going to have to withdraw the amendment for the fear that there was opposition to it. I was, thought that I was trying to make it stronger, and I'm glad that everybody understands that it is. And I want to assure everybody, you know, I wish it was only true that I was capable of original thought. As you can see from the testimony that I read from Professor Hamilton, this has been done in almost a dozen states now. The amendment that I'm proposing here was utilized in California, and I assure you that it went through years and years, literally, years of deliberation, litigation, going up and down before they finally got their windows legislation to be acceptable by the court. The final legislation that was passed in 2001, there were attempts earlier that were deficient for one reason or another, and had to be redone. This protection was to address the concerns that I heard rumblings about. And I'm glad that all of you recognize it as being further protection, and as evidenced by the fact that I did not object to any of the amendments made by the good senator That you could make it mandatory and have the court chastise, discipline... That you could make it mandatory and have the court chastise, discipline, make the attorneys pay, because if they're going to take these actions, they had better, as he said, cross their Ts and dot their Is, because this is not meant as a way for people to go out and try to badger people or bully them. The intent of this legislation, Madam Speaker, is to provide an avenue by which we as a community can provide victims who have been sexually abused as minors to be able to come forward, even though the criminal statute that we passed in 33 has not gone into effect, and so consequently, they were victims when the statute limitations was one year from the offense, or three years from the offense, or three years from their majority, that they're going to be able to come forward and be able to bring civil action so that we as a community can find out who it was that harmed these children or these adults by the time it's coming forward. So I thank my colleagues for strengthening and recognizing this, and I want to thank the 11 who even before this amendment thought that the legislation should be passed. So I thank you there, and I...
Before you sit, Mr. Vice Speaker, when, earlier, right when you started to add this new section, you have your item number two, is that subsection two? We want to make sure that we have that correct. It's the fourth line? That's subsection two, right, on the bill, on page two? Is what you're referring to?
No, it just could be a whole new section.
No, it's a new section three?
Correct.
Okay, so can you just make a general amendment then to the...
The clerk can make the requisite amendment, the technical amendments to number it appropriately and for the bill.
Thank you very much for that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I think maybe the better sense of valor is to sit while I think that I'm ahead. I thought that I was making it better, and then it looked like I might be undermining it, but since it looks like I'm moving forward, I'm going to sit down and be quiet.
Okay. On the Vice Speaker's amendment, I'm not quite sure in terms, when I was listening to Senator Panglinen speak, whether you were objecting or not. No, you weren't. So then, on the amendment, are there any objections? There being none, so ordered. Okay, so on the motion, is there anyone? Okay, yes, no, the amendment has passed already. So now on the motion, to send down to the third reading, file, would like to speak on... Okay, then Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
So this, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill, and would just like to give a perspective on it. I know it's a tough decision for us, like most of us in this community, the experience and looking at what has happened with regards to the discussion of child abuse and sexual child abuse, most specifically, when we look at it from the national scene and what has occurred, that, you know, there are probably two institutions that are most at the forefront of the issue. One, of course, is the Roman Catholic Church, and the others are the Boy Scouts. I mean, and in some cases, the Boy Scouts have been overshadowed by the problems that have been aired, that have affected the Roman Catholic Church and its priests with regards to child sexual abuse. So it, you know, it is not defensive even for the church to say that they're being targeted because they have been at the forefront of the publicity involving this. And it is their and the organization's transgressions against the children that have been placed in their care and entrusted to their care that have come forward and aired what has happened to them, and that they are the ones that are most being held accountable at this time. The Boy Scouts settlement, I believe, was in itself over half a billion dollars, or somewhere in that neighborhood. And I don't know, can I even don't follow anymore what has happened to that organization? But we do see continuously, from time to time, new allegations against the church in new places and new jurisdictions. So it, you know, as a Catholic, that, you know, and it is hard for me to accept that this institution that is supposed to help me save my soul has damaged so many others. But it is making attempts to deal with it. The Pope has come out over the years and attempted to address the issue, but it has not been able to resolve it, and part of it is because of the size of the institution itself. And I certainly appreciate, support what the church is trying to do. So as an institution, I still hold the institution, I think, for its attempts at righting some of these wrongs in high regard and high respect. And I still go to church every Sunday, and probably more so now than even before the allegations against the priests have come out. I still find a sense of peace when I go to church, I still find a value in it, it's still, I still subscribe to the concept of sin and redemption. And I think what we're trying to do with some of the legislations we're looking at is to help these people who have been harmed by the actions of the members of our church, help them from find peace and redemption. I wanted to comment on a statement that the Vice Speaker made, which I'm sure that he meant no harm to, but wanted to also take a look at the other side of that. And he said that he looks at his nieces, and they're beautiful nieces, and they are. But one of the biggest struggles maybe the people have of those people that get abuses, it has nothing to do with looks. Child abuse has nothing to do with how the child looks, whether they're beautiful or not so beautiful physically. It is a crime and a violation of violence of the powerful over the powerless. And I think part of the struggle with some, and it may seem like it's trivial, but part of the struggle with some people who have been violated by this is, maybe nobody would believe him because they are not beautiful. And that our society has said that, you know, sexual abuse, rape is tied to sexual attractiveness as defined by our society, and it is, nothing can be further from the truth. Is it a crime of violence and abuse and perpetration that is not sexual at all? And that's why it's so hard for us to get, to understand it and to get rid of it. This bill, I think, would allow us to enable... No, this bill would allow us to empower the powerless and to stop enabling the powerful to continue their domination over the powerless. And as again, I go back to that statement that it does not protect all children. But if it will protect one child, if it will protect a child, then I think it's a good thing. And I know that this bill will not harm one child if we pass it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
So, Madam Speaker, and Manana Sizouz, to everybody here, I say that many of God's blessings as we look at this bill this morning, and maybe before I start, I want to thank the Majority Leader for putting this bill on the floor. For whatever reason, however how, I need to tell you, Madam Speaker, that as we heard the previous speaker speak, and he's talked about stop enabling the powerful to protect the children involved, I need you to know that the time for justice, the real time for justice is right now. As policymakers, we know, we hear, we read. And we know in our hearts that it even happens to the closest, the closest to a lot of us in here. And if we want to right a wrong, if we truly want to right the wrong and truly want to protect our children, the time is, the time for justice is always right now. And Madam Speaker, as I continue to reread some of the testimonies that were in here for both 34 and 33, and to the listening audience out there, those who took the time to have the courage, to be brave, to tell their story and to share it so that they can start healing, I want to say thank you. I want to say, for what you have done, to truly find it in your heart, to come out and make a difference. And we as policymakers will find it in our hearts to say to everybody out there, the time for justice is always right now, and let's start today. So, Madam Speaker, I want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to rise in support of Bill Number 34-31COR. I want to thank the good author, the Vice Speaker, for really having the strength, the courage, the bravery to speak and stand up and say, "This has to start with us today. We have to make that difference. We have to know that if we truly want to protect our children, we start right now." So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Dennis Rodriguez, on the motion?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I was one of the committee members that voted in favor of passing and reporting it out of committee. And just like Bill 33, this measure, Madam Speaker, I believe protects our children. I said on 33 that I'm a father, and I'll do everything I could to protect my children, and with Bill 33, we did that. With the amendment that the Vice Speaker had put forward and we agreed to adopt, I think is, made it a little bit more easier for me to accept and to know that we're putting some responsibility in doing, in what we're doing here with Bill 34. It sets the burden a little bit higher on how, on how the victims that come forward must abide by. I think it's good that while we protect the victims, that we also protect individuals that may be target of wrongful accusation. And so I was looking at page two, section two, line 22. It says, "A person against whom a suit is filed may recover attorney's fees where the court determines that a false accusation was made with no basis in fact and with malicious intent." Well, I think that section is pretty clear cut, and, you know, it's good, you know, we, that, just like I said, that we also protect the wrongfully accused. I think just to be able to recover attorney's fees is not enough. And I think, you know, because I know a particular individual that went through something similar, was going through something similar, and I know how hard it is on this individual, how hard it is on this individual's family, that being accused of something that you know deep in your heart, you didn't commit, you didn't do, but because there was ulterior motives in bringing that accusation forward, it hurts. It hurts, it hurts me to see individuals go through this type of situation. And while a court will determine that an accusation was false, and fine, it's good that, you know, we're going to award attorney's fees back because I'm sure there's a lot of cost involved in defending yourself, but I think we should also look at the damages that it inflicts on a person. And so I'm going to ask if I can make an amendment to include after fees and damages. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So again, can you please repeat the actual section?
Page two, section two, line 22, after attorney's fees to add "and damages."
Okay, so it's on page two, line 27?
Twenty-two.
Oh, twenty-two, I'm sorry. Recover attorney fees and?
And damages.
Damages. On the amendment, are there any objections? Would anyone like to discuss it? No objections, and so ordered. Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. On the amendment? I mean, I'm sorry, on the amendment, on the motion. Senator, can I go back to Senator Rodriguez? Because I mean, even in the new amendment, that's why I was looking at G, where it does have the last three lines, the same thing that where it shall order to pay any reasonable expenses, including attorney fees, so that when you say reasonable expenses, is that you're also?
I'm sorry, are you on the amendment?
On the amendment, yes, on Page 2 of the amendment, on G. The last two lines. So, reasonable expenses, would that equate to damages? I'm not an attorney, of course, but I just, because I was listening to what you were saying.
Yeah, I don't know. I would have to ask legal counsel because no, that wouldn't constitute for me, at least it wouldn't constitute damages.
Then we'll go ahead and take a brief recess then. Let's let your back in session and Senator Rodriguez, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to place another amendment on Page 2, Line 27, after fees, which just include "and damages" as well.
Okay. On the amendment, without any objections and so ordered. Thank you, Senator Rodriguez. On the motion, recognize Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm going to preface my testimony here by saying first, if you did wrong, it's wrong to abuse an individual, whether it be sexually, physically, mentally. And I firmly believe that with regards to the action of this body with Bill 33, that we put those measures in. I don't want to say to protect, because no matter what law we put in, somebody's going to break it. But we put in there, granted prospectively, we made it stronger so that we can we can punish the individuals, the perpetrators. You know, a lot of times, we as a body, we as legislators, we enact or we draft legislation, we present legislation based on conversations, experiences, observations of flaws in the system, areas that we can probably make, we can strengthen so that these flaws can be reduced, if not eliminated. These individuals can be safer and we can do a better job of protecting people. And I say this because I look at this legislation and recognizing that yes, this was done, or yes, this could have been done, or yes, this possibly was done. I would like to look at ways that we can we can strengthen the laws so that it'll never be done again. And some may argue that this is in fact what this law is going to do, because then it's going to expose something that happened 30, 20, 30 years ago. We can identify these individuals, these individuals be identified, and it won't happen again. But is it really going to do that? You know, there's again, I have to go back to what this body did with Bill 33. We strengthened it. We put teeth into it to protect. My concern with this bill now is and again, I appreciate and I go back to the amendment that was proffered earlier by the good author in being able to separate frivolous from fact. But like I said, this body can pass the law, but chances are, somebody's going to want it. It's still going to break it. My consternation and my concern with this bill is not because I want to protect, and no way I don't want my testimony or what I stand here for to say that I'm trying to protect the perpetrators. No, I'm not, and I never will. And there was some concern earlier, and I've also raised some concerns too, along with some of my colleagues, of being able to just make sure, I mean, what about those individuals that can be falsely accused? And as I brought up earlier, what is going to be the standard of proof? How are we, what are the protective measures to make sure first off that one was, is it frivolous? What will be the standard of proof for the plaintiff? What will be the standard of proof for the defendant? What would be the standard of proof to be able to show, and it says here with regards to one of the areas that concerns me is if the person committed active sexual abuse against a minor was employed by an institution, agency, firm, business, corporation, or other public or private legal entity that owned a duty of care to the victim, and that there was finding of gross negligence, that they're a party to the suit. It's going to be the standard there. And I want to do my my soul searching on the basis of just what is provided as to what is going to be law. I'm not going to look at the legislative intent. Because if our intent here, and our intent should be that we want to put measures in to protect our children, to protect those that are vulnerable in a society, protect all individuals from criminal sexual assaults, sexual assaults. We did it with Bill 33. We're going to do it with Bill 33. How is this going to protect those individuals, Bill 34? How is it going to assure that it doesn't happen again? If that be the case, I would rather see prospectively, prospectively. That if individuals have difficulty, could not, that basically it raises the statute of limitations as far as providing civil litigation on events that occur prospectively. Madam Speaker, you yourself, I mean, there are times we recognize, we draft legislation based on problems that have occurred in the past. We draft legislation so that we make sure that those problems will continue to persist in the future. I don't see how that does that with this bill. That said, and in my effort, good faith effort to be able to make improvements to the bill, should the bill have enough votes and should it pass. So, I'd like to be able to proffer an amendment that would go on Page 2, Line 22, where it says, "A person against whom a suit is filed may recover attorney's fees where the court determines that a false accusation was made with no basis in fact or with malicious intent." Recognizing, Madam Speaker, that you know, one of the individuals or party that could be brought into the suit is an institution, agency, firm, business, corporation, or other public or private legal entity that owned a duty of care to the victim, that if they could be brought in as a party to the suit, if the court determines that a false accusation was made to them as well, that they also can recover attorney's fees. So, I'd like to put on Line 22, after a person, to include after a person or the institution, agency, firm, business, corporation, or other private or legal entity.
On the amendment, on Page 2 of the original bill, Line 22, after the word "person" to add "or the institution, agency, firm, business, corporation, or other public or private legal entity." And then we'll continue on against whom a suit may be filed, may recover attorney's fees, and it was amended "and damages." On the amendment. No objections to the amendments or?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, again, I just want to close by saying, you know, ma'am, as was my concern with a previous bill that this body was deliberating on, and my concern with the broadness and in some cases, the ambiguity, and the leaving it basically up to interpretation of some of the language, I have concerns with regards to what is being set in as far as the bill. I think because of the leaving it to the broad interpretation of instances like gross negligence. What's the standard that's going to be set for that? What are the standards that are going to be set for a number of different things that are that are going to be required to be able to prove the validity of this case? Those are things that haven't been answered, I mean, haven't been set. And it concerns me. Again, a lot of we base legislation on issues, on concerns that have been brought to us. We recognize that there are problems. We enact legislation, we draft legislation to be able to address those things so it doesn't happen prospectively. We were able to do that in as far as addressing the sexual assault that occurs on innocent people, on people, on individuals who, in a lot of cases, can't fend for themselves. We addressed that in an earlier legislation that this body had deliberated on. And I would be more confident and I would be more comfortable with this legislation had this legislation been, was addressed prospectively. There's still too many issues and too many concerns that I have with regards to what amounts to basically just a one-page legislation, piece of legislation that's going to have overriding effect. It's going to have monumental effects. And so, with that, Madam Speaker, again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present my issues, my concerns, my perspective on this. It's I recognize we have to protect them. I don't know if this is the vehicle that does that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Tom Adda on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Normally, I wouldn't speak, I wouldn't rise to speak on issues such as this. But I attended the public hearing on this bill and some of the things that I heard there certainly emboldened me to really question and in fact, arrive at the point where I can say that I I obviously, I clearly will support Bill 34. At the public hearing, there was an individual that stepped forward, presented testimony against Bill 34. And some of the points that he made just really got me to thinking about whether in fact, there's anything being taken to kind of right some of the wrongs that allegedly had taken place. The witness that stepped forward to present testimony against 34, at one point articulated the fact that he was concerned about the financial impact this might have upon the institution that he represented. And so, in my mind, he was saying that it was all about money. This could bankrupt us and never mind the lives that have been destroyed, but this bill has the potential for impacting that institution. Then, in the course of his testimony, there was some statements that was made to the effect that they are doing things that might be necessary to prevent some of these alleged abuses from reoccurring. And in my mind, when he said that, And in my mind, when he said that, I had then asked the question, then, if you're doing things to prevent these alleged abuses from reoccurring, that means then that some have occurred. And the response that he gave was, "Well, we're just waiting for people to step forward and, you know, make the claims that in fact, they have been abused." And the irony of it all was just minutes before that, there was an individual sitting next to him who stepped forward and said, "I am a victim of sexual abuse by this institution." And that that very individual went to the highest member of that institution to tell him about the incident, and nothing ever came of it. And so, as I thought about these things, I was one like, gosh, where's the, I, I don't sense any remorse, I don't sense any genuineness that something is being done to make sure that the alleged perpetrators are, you know, being handled appropriately. And so I, and then throughout the entire testimony of this individual, it appeared that there were, there was this defensive tone to the testimony, as if something was being hidden. Now, the question was asked by an earlier speaker, "How do we, how does Bill 34 protect children?" And I think it was mentioned earlier by the author of the bill, that Bill 34 will protect children in that we can flush out some of these rats that are being protected, and get them off so that they no longer prey on young children. And so I think Bill 34 is very important, and that we've got to stop what is going on now, and that Bill 33 certainly is a very good complement to that, because from here forward, be it known to the perpetrators or would-be perpetrators, that, that this will haunt them for the rest of their lives. So I, I rise in support of 34, and it's a, it's a, it's a difficult decision, I think. One, because I know that the decision that I'm making certainly would go against the very institution that I've always been a member of for the past 60 years. But that public hearing that day certainly was the turning point for me, because of the statements made by that representative, who supposedly came from the inner sanctums, I guess you could call it, of that institution, who was sent there to speak on behalf of the institution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Adda. Does anybody else like to speak on the motion? Oh, you already did, Senator Yamashita, yes. Senator Guthrie, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I've been observing the dynamics and the interaction and the presentations on this bill, and I've read it three or four times. And I looked at the bill, and then I was thinking about the experiences that I had at the Guam Police Department and the Department of Public Safety, dealing with cases involving children who are victims of sexual crimes. And I asked myself, would this bill, if it became law, help to serve as a deterrent in some way? I know the bill we, we acted on and considered, rather, on, on Monday certainly would. And then I asked, would this bill also serve as a deterrent if it passes into law? And was it written in a way that would allow the screening out of accusations that were motivated not by the actual events or by the real concern for the victim, but by, or for other purposes? When the amendment was introduced on this bill, I felt a little more comfortable, because I felt that served as a mechanism to ferret out claims of abuse and provide a way to do that, which would basically help ensure that individuals that file complaints are serious about it and have a basis to do so, because of the screening mechanism. So I felt more comfortable with the amendment being offered by the author of the bill. What I don't want to see on our island is a witch hunt kind of approach to this. And there are many people who are fearful that this bill could open up that kind of activity here. But at the same time, Madam Speaker, there's got to be some kind of faith in our justice system, that through our justice system, even in a civil case, that our judges and our courts are set up to be able to ferret out the truth from lies. If we don't have faith in the process of our judicial system, then what do we have? What do we have to look to? Now, the emotions associated with this bill, I mean, I understand there's some dynamics that occurred that were very unfortunate. And one thing I would like to say, if I may, is that there are a lot of bills that come before us that create that kind of emotions and sometimes a lack of collegiality. And I, I'd like to encourage my colleagues to remember that this hall is a hall of great importance to the people of Guam. And they look to us to help them determine whether or not a measure before us has been properly discussed and vetted, and a course of action has been decided that is in their best interests, because we represent them. So at this point, I just want to say that I like the amendment that was offered. I don't think, really, at least I would hope that the author of the bill, his intent, I don't think his intent is to hurt others or to seek retribution. On the other hand, the concerns that have been expressed about the bill are valid concerns that should be brought forward and discussed, and I think we're doing that here. When it comes to voting for this bill, I'm going to give it a little more thought. We still have a little more time, if it goes down to the voting file. I think we still have more time. And I want to talk to a few more of my colleagues. But I, I do have a concern about the retro provision in the bill, and I, I hope that if this does pass, that it stands muster legally, that we can, in fact, open something up for two years and allow individuals who may have felt they have been mistreated to file their complaints for civil action within that timeframe. I hope there's case presidents and legal presidents to do this, where it can stand. I talked to legal counsel, one legal counsel said that, yes, there is a precedent for it, but that's, that's what's on my mind. Will this bill stand legal muster? And I, I want to get more clarification on that, Madam Speaker, at least before I vote on it. Maybe you can help and ask our legal counsel if it meets legal muster in terms of the two-year window provision. That would help me a lot. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthrie, and my apologies to Dr., I mean, Senator Yamashita, because I looked at my records, and you spoke on the amendments, you can speak on the main motion, so you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was sitting here trying to think, how did I goof? So thank you very much. I sat and I listened to minority leader, my minority leader, ask how would this help our kids and our families? And I, and I think, and I believe that any movement, any measure, that would make it legal, would make it safe, that would give opportunity for those who've been, who felt that they've been wronged, any measure that would help them step forward would help them. I said earlier that in 2010, we had over a thousand of our Guam kids abused, over 300 of them were sexually abused, and on our island, our infants are being abused. How does this help our families? I think that messages, strong messages, when they're sent out, strong messages that are sent out will send, will hopefully make those who are sick, who are meant, who are just, do wrong things, make them think twice. Once we start processing and bringing to justice those who have hurt our children, and once it goes across our island that this is not acceptable, that damages will be paid, then perhaps that would deter others from doing that. I suggest that measures like this could help break cycles. You know, the only way sexual abuse, as you know, Madam Speaker, is really going to stop is if, is once we start getting families on target about how to raise their children, and how we get schools on target, and the larger community on target, and how to respect all children, and how to treat them well so that they can turn around and treat others well. Until we get on-target parenting, which parenting is perhaps the most important job in the whole world, but it's also the one job that does not require any training or certification. It's more of, this is how I remember it. And so unfortunate cycles perpetuate. Some are broken, but many keep going. So how do we break these cycles and how do we protect these children are through measures. It's against the law, you can't do it. There are opportunities to step forward, there are people going to help you. And then on the other side is, if I do this, then I can get in a lot of trouble. If I do this, I'll have a record that will prevent me from getting good-paying jobs moving forward. I too was at the public hearing along with Senator Tom Adda and many of us, and I was very disheartened by a community leader, so to speak, who was very, very concerned about what it would do to their financial resources. And if you look at the tapes, he then asked me what it would do to the DOE Bank. And I said to him that had nothing to do with anything, but this had everything to do with providing an opportunity so that we can help children and families correct the wrong and get better, and so that it'll send a message to those who need help, get help, stop the wrong behavior, stop the criminal behavior. So while it won't stop abuse in a marked way, I do believe that it'll put up some obstacles. And as Senator Guthrie had said, she's going to think more about 34. I hope that we all think more about 34, and how every little step that will help provide a cleaner, safer, healthier avenue for our families, that we consider taking those steps. Because these are people, these are our children, these are our families, who feel, who are at a loss of how to move forward, and they're not sure. So these kinds of measures provide those opportunities to build their strength and to move forward and to help them out. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Senator, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I sat quietly and listened intently to all the comments made with respect to Bill 34, and I certainly appreciate and have great empathy for the mover of the bill, who we understand and we know is dealing with these very issues, and as well as some of other, our colleagues who have been brave enough to come forward and say that they too may have been affected by this very subject matter. Madam Speaker, the fact that members of our body have expressed some concerns for the bill, but also in what happens if someone is falsely accused, kind of speaks to why the bill, it was not on the floor, kind of speaks to why, Madam Speaker, there was a need to have some other issues addressed, and kind of speaks to the need to why the mover of this amendment, who is the same mover of this bill, proffered an amendment which kind of tightens up this process, to provide a screening process to which you can weed out anyone who may be falsely accused. I want to rise this afternoon to say that any one of us who would be concerned with making sure that people aren't falsely accused is not to rise and stand up for perpetrators. I think that's where the debate starts, and that's where the emotions start, Madam Speaker. If we want to make sure that under the Constitution, everybody is innocent until proven guilty, and we want to preserve and protect that due process, the sponsor himself spent many years as a family judge, he spent his time as a chief justice on the bench, he of all people, I understand, and I know, has passion for the Constitution and for due process, and to just say that anyone who opposes the bill wants to protect perpetrators. Now, is that fair? Is that really a fair statement to make for those of us who are?
Point personal privilege.
You may state your personal privilege.
Madam Speaker, I never, ever said that anybody opposed to the bill was protecting predators. That cannot be attributed to me.
We, we should just stick to the, the amendments of the bill with the main motions.
We could play the record back, Madam Speaker, because I think people have to be responsible and held liable for the things that they say. Maybe they now, we have, we have protected privilege by the things that we say in this body, but if you want to be collegial, Madam Speaker, I think my message is, just as we tell people with the other sensitive issues that we're facing in this legislature, take out all the emotions, let's just address the bill on its merit. But I think I have, I, I had to have set my piece with respect to how this bill was handled, not only in committee, but also how it was handled in the Committee on Rules, and how no motion was made in the Committee on Rules, and then yet, there's a page two in the Maroon's Variety article that says that I'm blocking Bill 34. Now, having said all that, I also feel the need to rise to say that a person is innocent until proven guilty, and to simply, to provide a two-year window in a civil procedure where we know what will happen theoretically. Prior to this amendment, there was no screening, Madam Speaker, so someone can say, based on the new statute, something happened to me 25, 30 years ago. I go get an attorney, the organization, I'm going to prove that this organization was, there was gross negligence, so that organization go gets an attorney, without even the benefit of having a prosecutor to mediate that process, Madam Speaker. to mediate that process, Madam Speaker. You just have the person that's saying this happened, the organization that's saying, we're going to defend ourselves, and the only recourse is money. And that's what the settlement is. Even though the individual is found guilty through that process, they will not go to jail. It's a civil procedure. And having, understand that, Madam Speakers, that's why, that's why I asked that we have some pause in the bill. So obviously, the amendment changes things. The amendment changes things where there, where there's required a screening, and where the judge is going to be able to determine if there's a probable cause. But I don't think the amendment goes far enough, and as one member of our, our body here suggested, the amendment may actually have a chilling effect as to whether or not people might be able to come forward to say that these things happened and avail themselves to this bill should it become law. My additional concerns with this amendment, and I've been saying from the very beginning, I've been very upfront, in other jurisdictions that provide for window legislation, they provide for things like compelling evidence. Is there an apology letter? Do you have any DNA? Are there photos? Or some, something that will show evidently a corroborative fact, evidence on top of the evidence. That's what that means. And so when I look at the amendment on Page 2, and it says corroborative fact, I don't know what line because it's not numbered, corroborative fact is evidenced by the statement of a witness or the contents of a document. The contents of a document really could be that apology letter that, that some people have said maybe, maybe that the threshold or the standard to which people can come and make these charges and have, and have their justice served. But I, I'm concerned by just requiring a statement of a witness. To simply require someone to, to make a statement that, yeah, 25 years ago, I was there, and I believe it happened. You know, so my first amendment is to strike the word statement of a witness, and so that way we focus on that standard, where you're just going to require that the corroborative fact is evidenced by the contents of a document, and the certificate shall declare that the attorney has personal knowledge of the statement. Maybe we have to do some more work.
Can you, Senator, just at least give us the number or subsection so that we would be able to follow with you?
So Page 2?
Yes.
One, two, three.
Which subsection?
E.
E?
Line 15.
Okay, but it's...
I mean, it's not numbered, but I...
No, but it said E, and then, or 1?
So E, 1...
Okay, 1.
And then several lines under that.
Okay, and it starts with what?
Cooperative.
No, I mean the beginning of the sentence, so we'll be able to...
Well, the sentence above that starts with if.
If, okay, so go ahead then from there.
If the corroborative fact is evidenced by, and I want to strike the words out, statement of a witness, because this amendment is not even saying a sworn statement, it's just merely a statement. So I want to strike out the word statement of a witness. And then further down, you would also say that the certificate shall declare the attorney has personal knowledge of the statement of the witness. So you just say the certificate shall declare the attorney has personal knowledge of the contents of the document.
Okay, so let's do one at a time so we can know where we are. So on Page 2 of the amendment, 1, starting with the sentence if. So if the corroborative fact is evidenced by, delete the statement of a witness, and even or...
And or, yeah.
And or. So you'll read evidence by the contents of the document. On that amendment, Vice Speaker, you recognize.
Madam Speaker, though, while I understand, and I don't want to get into major debate over this, we're rewriting 200 years of operations and what all these mean. There is no definition in here of what gross negligence is, is because there are whole courses that are taught, there are hundreds and hundreds of cases of what gross negligence is, that the judge has to, in making their findings. On the basis of what the standard of review is, it's the preponderance of evidence, which is the civil standard, which is different from the criminal standard beyond a reasonable doubt. That has been the civil standard for over 200 years. Cooperation in our rewriting it, we're rewriting what cooperation has meant and is, does mean in, in case law that has gone back 200 years. Statement of a witness is part of the cooperation. As I stated yesterday, though I was not a plaintiff in the case in California, my statement was the corroborative evidence that was being used to convince the order in my school to tell the priest that abused me to get off his high horse and quit saying that all the kids that did come forth and were, were mentioned in, as party plaintiffs, were not telling the truth, because I came forth and described in detail. If they're not going, some people, if we're not going to vote for the bill or the amendment, then just don't vote for it. But don't go through and start striking it to completely disable it. Vote it down. But this, a whole history of what cooperation means, and it's not just a photograph or a document.
On the amendment, does anybody else would like to speak on it? Senator Esposito, since there is an objection, going to have to call for the vote. So all those in favor then of deleting the words the statement of a witness or, all in favor, please raise your hand. Senator Esposito, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I'm also cautious in making amendments, because I was just, we were just advised that just vote the bill up or down. It's really contrary to the legislative process. We're supposed to be a deliberative body, and that even though, we've seen it all the time, even though some of us may not approve of a bill, we may want to work on that bill to make it better. So now are we prohibited from making any amendments, Madam Speaker? I mean, it's just those kinds of things that I'm saying just goes against this idea of being collegial. I expressed to you a point that when, when we want to, when I made the motion to strike a statement of a witness, it's really not to rewrite the whole, how these civil cases are handled, but to really make sure that we are concerned that we protect due process. Even here in our legislature, Madam Speaker, with the Ethics Committee, we found that we had to do a major rewrite with the rules for this term than how it was in the previous term. When a complaint is filed before a member of the body, the chairperson automatically had to forward that to the attorney for review, and those cases are not dismissed until that committee meets. But the more these cases proceed, regardless of what the outcome is in the end, whether the individual is innocent or guilty, because they went through that process, you might as well deem them guilty and, and call it a day. And so in my attempt to try to provide some kind of balance here and some kind of opportunity to not only make sure that the victims have some semblance of justice if they can come forward, but that there's also the other side of the equation. You're talking about the ability now to go and charge someone who's dead. And so the other concern I have, Madam Speaker, is that this screening process is kind of like the jury system, where only one side of the evidence is presented for that determination to be made as to whether or not that individual will be indicted. Maybe we can break for lunch, but before we do that, I just want to offer some kind of suggestion that we give the other side an opportunity to prevent, to present the evidence to the court. And if we're serious about, about this probable cause notion, if we're serious about making sure that justice is served for both the plaintiff and the defendant, then we really ought to consider adding to this bill the opportunity for the other side to present its case to the judge, so the judge can have both sides of the story before they move forward. We're talking about a civil procedure here, not a criminal one. And so there's a very different process, and...
So Senator, do you have the amendment, or you need time then to prepare one? Okay, so we're going to go and take a lunch break, and we'll be back at 2:00. On the list to still speak is Senator Tighren. I want to also let you know that this afternoon, we are supposed to be, there's a signing of the Half Day Spirit that would take place at 2:00, so. Yes. I'm sorry, we'll, we'll discuss that. So we're going to take a recess until 2:00 this afternoon.
Will you sign ahead of 2:00?
No, beforehand, before we go into session.
Oh, by 3:00.
But then, but then nobody's going to be here at 2:30. I mean, at 2:00. So that's why I'm saying, 2:00, and we'll play it by ear. The legislature's back in session. Senator Esposito, before we took a lunch break, we left off with you, and you said you have an amendment that you'd like to proffer.
No, I won't proffer that amendment or any other amendment on this bill, but rather just close, Madam Speaker, to say that I understand the whole intent of the bill and to try to provide some meaningful resolution and justice to those who need it the most, and that's, these individuals who've been victimized, who've been violated, who have been sexually abused, sexually raped, and it's the most heinous crime that anyone of us can ever come to that conclusion. It's a crime that's unimaginable. And while I understand what the desires are, Madam Speaker, and I would never stand in the way of having anyone be able to have that kind of justice, as a matter of fact, justice is justice, there's different versions of it. There's restorative justice, there's, there's justice through the penal system, and there's just, in a desire to do those kinds of things, Madam Speaker, I also want to ask the body to just pause a little bit to understand what the consequences of this, or an unintended consequence of this bill. And although the amendment was made, I tried to proffer an amendment to that amendment that would take out a statement by a witness. That didn't pass, Madam Speaker. My concern, as it will always be, is that we're not, we're not setting a standard to which these cases can be brought forward in the civil procedure. We're simply saying that if, if there's a witness that can, that can say that they saw something happen, if there's cooperative evidence, evidence beyond the evidence, then the judge can decide. Maybe that might bring some comfort to some people. For me, it probably doesn't. It doesn't, because we know that if you don't have a standard to which these cases can come forward, in the end, even if the, if the individual or organization that's charged, in the end, you might as well have deemed them guilty from the very beginning, because you, you've allowed this process to go forward without providing any boundaries, any checks and balance, any, any meaningful recourse whatsoever, so that it's balanced in the sense of the victim, if it's truly something that happened, that the victim will be able to be recompensed. If it didn't happen, that the person that's been accused of these heinous incidences will be made whole. That, Madam Speaker, in and of itself, remains to be seen. So I arise to express extreme caution with this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Esposito. On the motion, I recognize Senator Tighren.
Just a final question.
Please, please, can you please, on the mic, please state your point of information?
Madam Speaker, I had my notes here, that the last amendment I had was to delete statement of a witness.
Yes, it failed. Senator Tighren, okay, Senator Tony Adda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is on the motion, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, you know, I've been listening all morning to how we, we went back and forth on this bill, how we're talking about the perpetrators, the perpetrators to children. How can we protect our children from those perpetrators? And we're still at that point where we keep talking about the perpetrators, and we're, that we vote against the bill, that means we're protecting perpetrators. If we don't vote against the bill, that means we're going to punish them. If that's the, if that's our true intent as a body, then I would like to make an amendment, Madam Speaker, to delete, under Section 2, line 15, beginning at the word if, the person, all the way down to line 21, the legal entity, to delete that portion there. And let's go truly after the perpetrators of those that abuse children. When we start looking at businesses, agencies, firms, who is to say that, we'll just go for one of our GovGwami agencies, who is to say that a director had knowledge that something was going on at, the perfect example, Department of Youth Affairs? Does that put our department now in legal jeopardy? Are we willing to, to have these people, when they're not knowing what's going on, to be responsible? If we want to go after the perpetrators, let's go after the perpetrators. But let's not go after the innocent people that have no knowledge, especially when we're talking about private businesses, we're talking about firms, we're talking about GovGwami agencies. We open the door to Pandora's Box on all these when we talk about, because they don't know, or if they didn't have any knowledge of knowing what's going on, they're still legally liable.
Senator, please state your point of information.
Senator, my recommendation is that, to write back to my report, amended legal sex determination, sex determination, which later was expanded to section harassment, basically, an entity can't be held liable if it knew of the violations and did not immediately stop.
So it's just a point of information, and that, that has resulted in many lawsuits holding certain organizations liable...
Thank you very much.
...for not intervening when they should have, because they were aware of what had happened.
Okay, thank you, Senator. And if you'd like to also speak a little bit later on in support of the amendment, then I can call on you.
So just as the good senator said, there's already an existing law. So why do we need to have this section in there? So that is my amendment, Madam Speaker, to delete Section 2, line 15, beginning at the word if, and ending on line 21 to legal entity. Thank you.
Senator, wait, before you finish, I just want to also let you know, and I don't know if you want to deal with this later on, but if you recall on line 22, that we did add that on too.
Can I just...
No, I know, I just want him to make sure he knows.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on, on the motion, I mean, the amendment, Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, I rise in opposition to the amendment. There is no reason why we shouldn't, we should shield people who grossly negligent in not providing, in not assuring that they deter, I mean, they, they screen all of their employees and make sure. We have provisions that say in DOE, people that are on the registry... We have provisions that say in DOE, people that are on the registry are not, aren't to be employed. And if we know that they're on the registry, it didn't matter if they were the cousin of the governor or whatever, that they shouldn't be employed. And if we know that they are, and, and they're on the registry, and we, and we employ them, and they sexually harass a child in the offices, then you should be held responsible for your, for your, for your negligence in not making sure that your workplace is, is a safe, is a safe workplace. You're always held liable for what, what you have under your control, or what's in your name. Your name is on your car, you give it to a little 14-year-old, and she drives off and kills somebody, not only is that, that, the, the guardians of that child going to be responsible, but if the car is in your name, you're also going to be responsible. We're all held to be responsible in, in tort, in, in hundreds of years of, of tort law, that that is, is a responsibility of, of the superior or responsibility of the owner. And you have to try to figure out whether or not these, they're, they're being shielded, and to remove them completely would... I, I would like to, you know, almost want to bring up a case that was just in the New York Times last week, but then it'll just complicate things. But it just shows there has to be some responsibility, because it just, you, you have to, to make sure that if you have children within your care, regardless of whether it's in the school or you're in the Boy Scouts, or you're in swim league, or in soccer, that you make sure that, that they, that you protect them, even in, in football here. If the coach is negligent in not taking a child out who's, who's been, who they know is, is suffering from some asthmatic thing and the child dies, we, we've seen those problems here. All it's saying is if you're going to have children under your care, then you exercise a, a higher degree of, of care in making sure that you do nothing, or you don't have people in there that are going to harm children in any way, whether or not it's on a football field, by, by making them practice too long and then they dehydrate and die, or whether or not it's in the locker room and you sexually abuse them.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the amendment, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment. Yeah, Vice Speaker, I have to agree with the, with the mover of the amendment with regards to the conversations and, and really our understanding all morning long of what the conversations were, is in the protection of the, of the victims and protection of those individuals, and the privilege and the rights and the opportunity for these victims to be able to make, for justice, I guess, on, against those individuals that perform these acts on them. We're talking about the individual. Now, for us to say basically that, you know, here, the perpetrator plus the institution, again, it goes back to my whole concern with regards to, how is this gonna be defined? This morning, and I'm, I'm, I'll bring up the examples, because it was used, the example of the church. Is the actions of a priest in Boston Massusites indicative of the actions of the Catholic Church in its preachings throughout the world? Should the Church throughout the world be held responsible for its gross negligence? Because, but even at that, where, who do we intend to, in this case, for lack of a better term, punish? And what this does, and as far as this amendment, is it provides the clarity. It focuses on then, that perpetrator. If that perpetrator was that bad apple in that organization, weed, identify it, weed it out. And so, along those lines, that's why, ma'am, I'm in full support of this. Does it make it any more comfortable, any for, for me to be able to support this bill in the whole? Yet to be seen. But I have to agree with the mover of the amendment. It provides that clarity. If the intent is to go after the perpetrator, is to punish the perpetrator, then let's, then, okay, then let's do it.
Vice Speaker, is there...
Madam Speaker, on reconsideration, I withdraw my objection.
Okay, so there's, okay.
And we'll, we'll go straight just for the perpetrator. Because at least then we know who they are, and if they are part of an organization, that's, that's something else. I just want to get rid of the perpetrators. And if that's going to be the support, then fine.
Senator Yamashita, do you wish to speak?
Well, so perhaps I'm just a little confused now, but the reason why I would have, I mean, can I still talk about Senator Ades' amendment? The reason why I was going to speak against that was because I think that this bill is a very bold statement against sexual abuse, and it does provide a mechanism that says to everybody, pay attention, this is serious. This is about minors. The particular deletion would say that those minors who are employed or working or under the supervision of different agencies, that those people who should have known and they didn't know, then it's okay. And I suggest that anytime we put any of our children in the supervision of adults who are supposed to be taking care of them, they should know. Anytime a teacher says, "I didn't know," I say to them, "You should have known. That is your job." We put a minor and they're working, if they're 16, 17, and they're being supervised as they should be supervised, whomever is over them should know. Now, during the break, I talked a little bit with Senator Blas, and I was beginning to understand more and more of his concerns. And now, like I said, I'm a little confused about what just happened with, with the draw, withdrawal of what Senator Vice Speaker just did, but my statement is simply that, for me, this was major in saying to our island community, those who are responsible shall be held responsible. If you are at DYA, then you shall know everything that's going on with all of your clients. That's your job. That's your job. As a principle, you know this, Madam Speaker, it was your job to know what was going on with your thousands, no, with your hundreds and hundreds of kids, and your hundreds of staff. That was your job. Currently, it's the job of the superintendent to know what's going on in her schools. That's her job. And we already know that, and so someone is saying, "We don't need this, it's already known." All I suggest is that it strengthens what's already there. I feel that people who violate think they can just get away with it, because these are kids. And as I said earlier, I suggest that any way we can strengthen the message, that those times are over, those days are over, adults need to be held accountable, because they are the adults. I also said that we have a long way in going in parenting. We're far from where it should be, but, so what does a community do now? But to put in these kinds of mechanisms. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On, on the amendment, there is an objection. No, Senator Yamashita also objected to it. She would like to, to have it remain. We're gonna, we're gonna take a brief recess. Session. We are on an amendment that's been proffered by Senator Tonyada, and that is on page two, lines 15 to 21, to delete that whole sentence, starting with "if" on line 15 and to the end of line 21 on "entity." And there is an objection, so I'm gonna call for the vote. So all in favor to delete then those lines, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion carries. Senator Ada, you still have the floor?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to remove all those institu, references to the institutions on any other portion of the bill.
Okay, so on the amend, your amendment is, which was passed earlier, which is in subsection three, line 22, after the word "person" is the language it says, or the institution, agency, firm, business, corporate, corporation, or the public or private legal entity, to delete that entire line. And so the sentence then would be back in its original form. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, on that amendment, are there any objections? No objections, or... Okay, Senator Ada, you still have the floor?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to thank my colleagues for supporting the amendment. It just goes to show that we are truly, our, our intentions are truly to the perpetrators of those who commit the acts. And that's what we want to do, is to ensure that this is the way we are going as a body, and that we are going to pursue this, and we're gonna ensure that the children and those that are, those that are offended in one way or, or another, is protected. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. On the motion, Senator Tyeran, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I've been listening to the discussion all morning long. I was also at the, the hearing for this bill, and like my colleague was discussing earlier, I found some of the discussion and the testimony that was presented during that hearing quite disturbing. I'm a mother, and our society is matriarchal, so I see this as an opportunity for all the mothers to stand up and, and see this bill as a, a protection for our children, and it's our, our cultural instinct, our basic instinct as mothers, to protect our children. And you know, I'll tell you what, if this happened, if my child was ever a victim of sexual assault, I would pull out all stops and do everything to seek justice for my child. And I see this bill as an opportunity to do that for those children without a voice. You know, at the public hearing, I heard that institution speak out against this bill, and it's funny, because that same institution is the one that's asking us to protect the children in the womb. So we should protect the children that are already out of the womb and are blessed in our, in our God-given world. So I stand in support of this bill, and I ask my colleagues to also do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tyeran. I've exhausted the list of those who'd like to speak in the motion, so I'm going to ask then the mover, Vice Speaker, if you would like to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank all my colleagues for their comments today. The many comments that came from the, the members of this body made me proud, because they understood the issue even better than I did, and I want to thank them for helping me get some clarity in it. But I, I really appreciate Senator Ben talking about the fact that this is the powerful against the powerless, and that it has absolutely nothing to do with looks, and the importance that Mother Tyeran spoke about. And I even want to thank Senator Tonyada for his, his suggestion. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm at peace that if we can just identify these perpetrators and somehow, even, even, I know we can't incarcerate them, but at least if we can make the informed decision about whether or not we're going to have them around our children, then I think we're gonna be protecting many children in the future. And so I thank all my colleagues for their support. I hope that after the amendments that we put in to try to make this stronger and weaker both at the same time, that we will have everybody's vote in the end. And so I, I remember the words of our late speaker. Many talk, many mistake, little talk, no mistakes. So I will stop at this point and thank everybody.
On the motion then to send Bill 48 to the third reading, I mean, sorry, 48, Bill 34. I'm jumping the gun. I really want to send it down. Bill 34 to the third reading file without any objections. That's the order. So we are then on Bill 48. I'm gonna ask the Vice Speaker if you can please come up here.
I, Madam Speaker, are we still with Senator Guthers?
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, for, for allowing me to explain where we left off. I know we wanted to, to get some clarification on the process, but at the same time, I know I had made a, a motion to, I had offered rather an amendment to add a new B and then change the B to a C. But after speaking with Claudia, who basically handles the procurement for the rest of the government, one with the exception of DOE, is that the B really would not be a good idea to, to place those, because... That is why I offered this amendment. Now, yes, current procurement law does not perhaps allow the revealing of names of owners of companies when they've been on a project, or they pick up packets for a project. But this is a very exceptional situation, and we can amend that law for this situation. This is not a permanent change of the procurement law. This bill is only to deal with the era monies. So really, I would object to not including the names of the owners of these companies. And I think it's very simple to meet this requirement. All I have to do is have a little form. When people come in to get their packets, they fill out that little form, and disclose the company and the owners of the company. It's very simple. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Speaker, there is an objection. Do we want to go off air for a few minutes? Are anybody else, anybody else wish to be heard on the, on the motion? On the amendment, anybody else wish to be heard? Any objection to the, we note the objection by Senator Guthers? All right, there being an objection, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising their hand.
In support of your amendment.
All those in favor of the Juan Pat amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment is to strike number three of the specific names of owners, because for some reason, GSA is saying it's impossible to get. Okay, please, help me count. The amendment passes. Was that for both A and B, Madam Speaker?
No, that was only for A.
All right.
No, it wasn't for, it wasn't for B, it was just for A. Because in A, then, yes, you can already, because you've awarded it, so you can give a lot of information.
Okay. Now, the clerk had just wanted to know if it was A and B, I'm just asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. What I'd like to also do on small letter A, there were says, "requests for interest," you know, that's, I know she said "or," RFP, but rather that we put IFB, which is the invitation for bids, and/or, I mean, or rather, a RFP, which is a request for proposal. That to delete requests for interest, and replace it with invitation for bid.
Does everybody understand the amendment, strike, they quoted requests for interest, and in its place, put requests for bid? Anybody wish to be heard on the amendment? Is there an objection to the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? Hearing none.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I also, one of the comments that was provided during the public hearing, and I agree about having to publish these on local newspapers and Guam newspapers, but I think it's also important that it be posted or downloaded into their website. So it's not just having to pay, you know, a printed media to put out this information, but we're always talking about, you know, accountability and transparency, so every step of the way that they'll be able to provide this type of information on the GDOE website. No, we're doing, see, this is totally very different. Again, like you said, we're doing this only for, I mean, every step of the way, this is what we want to do, so we want to be able to do this as well, because there are various projects.
For the clerk, where do you want that amendment to be placed?
On where it says, "shall publish," well, I think was, I'm not sure what the amendment that was provided yesterday. I didn't write that down, but not just publish in the local newspapers, but to also post it on their website.
So after newspaper, you want, and post it on the GDOE website?
On the amendment. And that would be for A and B. For A and B, that not only is it being published in the local newspapers, but to also post it on their website.
Anybody wish to be heard on the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? Madam Speaker, any further amendments that you wish to make? Or was it?
Yes, I do, I have, if we can look on page three, is that I would like to move to delete on line 16, the words "the Chief Procurement Officer," or "the Department of Public Works." Right now, the GDOE have their own procurement, so they really are separate from them. They do not then fall under the Chief Procurement Officer or the Department of Public Works.
Madam Speaker, I beg your indulgence. I've just been advised by the clerk that we've not completed Senator Guthers' amendments.
Oh, that's right. Oh, yes, right, because I'm amending her amendments, that's right, so, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we're back to Senator Guthers. Any further amendments? You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to add, number five, question, I guess, number one, part A. Number five, a new number five to section A, part A of the section, the first section of this amendment, and it would read, "specific names of the officers of the company." Specific names of the officers of the company. So that is my amendment, Mr. Speaker. Well, because in your recent amendment, you removed number three.
No, it passed.
Yeah, number three passed, so I guess I could put, I could replace what, okay, so the new number would be, would be number three, but the language would be, "specific names of the officers of the company." Specific names of the officers of the company.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does everybody understand the amendment being proffered by Senator Guthers? Madam Speaker, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I know that we've removed the specific names of the owners of the company picking up the information, but now we're even going deeper than the owners, we're actually going in now to the officers of the company. And I don't know, I mean, really seriously, how you even be able to get the names of the officers or board members, or, you know, from a packet that you're picking up. Like I say, that sometimes these individuals that are going to pick up the packet may not necessarily be the company. So I think this is just, really just going into, to.
Is that an objection, or is that a request for a yield? Oh, okay. I believe on, there's been an objection, but Senator Tom Ada has raised his hand first, and then I'll get back to you, Senator Guthers, I'm sorry.
I think, well, I rise in support of the amendment, Mr. Speaker. I know that the, initially, the objection about removing the requirement for listing of the names and all that stuff is because when the, well, first of all, when they pick up the packets, it really could be any John Doe, and he could list down, we can't, we can't, we don't know. I think where it's really important that we know who the officers are and all that is after the award is made. Because then, you know, you may have 40 companies that pick up, or at least 40 individuals who come in to pick up RFPs, and then when it comes time to submit them, you maybe only have really 10, or much less, that would actually submit it. Now, if the requirement is to, when they go in to submit their packets, of course, the packets are going to be sealed, but as Senator from Baragat Mungilau had indicated, you know, then, so you attach an attachment sheet to the sealed packet, which says that this attached, or these submittals are from Company A, whose officers are John Doe, one, two, and three, and their physical address is all there. Now, you know, I know that, I believe in the procurement laws and the books there, it says, you know, all that information is sealed until an award is made, and then you publish the names of who actually was awarded, and not everybody else who submitted. But if that's, you know, the wish of the body is to know who picked up, who submitted, and then ultimately, who was awarded, then just attach a sheet to it, and let's move on. So I, you know, if, I would support the Guthers amendment, and I don't have a big problem with that.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator, I had told Senator Guthers she would, Senator Pangolinan wishes to speak, do you want to yield to him first? Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I support the amendment. Actually, it makes it easier to comply, because at REVEN Tax now, they've actually got most of their business license, articles of incorporation, into a database. And in order to file your articles, you have to have officers, and it is that information that is most readily available. So you can actually check. And as the retiring speaker said, if this is part of the law, then they just know that when they pick up a packet, that in order to receive a packet, you have to put, you have to say who you are, and these are the officers of the company I'm picking up the packet for. So it's very simple, there's no privacy issue, and I think it'll make for greater transparency, so, and easier to comply with. So rather than all the owners, because the owners you can have, you know, in a corporation, you can have 40 different owners, because they all hold stock in the corporation, but if it's the officers, it's really the operating entity of the corporation that is responsible for the operation, so it's easier to comply with.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Anybody else wish to be heard on the amendment, before I go back to Senator Guthers? Senator Guthers? Thank you. I believe there's been, there was an objection. There was an objection, so on the Guthers amendment, all those in favor of the Guthers amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. The motion passes. The amendment passes. Any, Senator Guthers, you still, Senator Guthers, you still have the floor, do you have any further amendments?
Just to say that I think this amendment will really help in ensuring some kind of transparency in this whole process of awards.
With your indulgence, I'm just going to check with the clerk if I have left anything up. Don't leave, please.
She asked me to go ahead if I can offer her amendment.
Oh, well, first, before we do that, I've been advised by the clerk that I did not make the motion, I mean, to ask if there's any objection to the amendment by Guthers, this whole sheet with the amendments made on it.
Oh, the amendment as amended.
Hearing no objection. The amendment as amended. Any objections?
None.
Hearing none. All right, Senator Ada, you're recognized.
The earlier speaker started out to make an amendment on page four, line, I'm sorry. Page three, starting at line 16. Basically, it talks about having to, let's see, "Funding for Procurement Includes Funds Allocated to DOE," or any amendments there. "The Chief Procurement Officer or DPW," may request in writing. Well, what it's saying here, starting on line 16, is that three people must ask, must submit in writing, on behalf of the Superintendent of Education, a request in writing for a waiver of one or more provisions of the procurement chapters. And the amendment was to remove, starting at line 16, the word "the Chief Procurement Officer," or "the Director of the Department of Public Works." And the reason for that is that DOE really has, it's not part of the central procurement, it's not part, doesn't come under DOE, so therefore, they really don't need to go through them. And so then, the request for a waiver really should just come from the third-party fiduciary agent acting on behalf of the Superintendent of Education, may request a writing, and may request.
So, on the Guthers amendment, all those in favor of the Guthers amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. The motion passes. The amendment passes. Any, Senator Guthers, you still, Senator Guthers, you still have the floor. Do you have any further amendments?
No. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just to say that I think this amendment will really help in ensuring some kind of transparency in this whole process of awards.
If, with your indulgence, I'm just going to check with the clerk if, if I have left anything up. Thank you. Don't leave, please.
She asked me to go ahead if I could offer her amendment.
Oh, well, first, before, before we do that, I've been advised by the clerk that I did not make the motion, I mean, to ask if there's any objection to the amendment by Guthers, this whole sheet with the amendments made on it.
Oh, the amendment as amended.
Hearing no objections. And the amendment as amended. Any objections?
None.
Hearing none. All right. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
The earlier speaker started out to make an amendment on page four, line... I'm sorry. Page three, starting at line sixteen. Basically, it talks about having to, let's see. Funding for procurement includes funds allocated to DOE, or any amendments there. The chief procure, the chief procurement officer or DPW... May request in writing. Well, what it's saying here, on, starting on line sixteen, is that three people must ask, must submit in writing, on behalf of the Superintendent of Education, a, a request in writing for a waiver of one or more provisions of the procurement chapters. And the amendment was to remove, starting at line sixteen, the word "the chief procurement officer" or "the director of the Department of Public Works." And the reason for that is that DOE really has, it's not part of the central procurement. It's not part, doesn't come under DOE, so therefore, they, they really don't need to go through them. And so, then the request for a waiver really should just come from the, the third-party fiduciary agent acting on behalf of the Superintendent of Education, may request a writing and, may request in writing a waiver of one or more provisions. So, on line sixteen, at the end there, starting with the word "the chief," and then continue on line seventeen, "the chief procurement officer or the director of public works." Strike out those words.
Does everybody understand what the amendment is, or does anybody wish to have it in writing for them to, to have it clear? Hearing no requests for it to be in, oh, hearing no requests to have it be in writing, then will it entertain the amendment as it was orally presented by Senator Ada. On the Ada amendment for Juan Pat, Senator Pangolinan.
Mr. Chair, I think the, the presentation of the amendment's fine, but I think the rationale is flawed, because the Department of Public Works is responsible, even outside of the Central Procurement Act, Department of Public Works is responsible for all capital improvement projects. So, they even, so, they have the authority on execution of RFPs and IFBs for, and, and for all capital improvement projects. So, to say that they don't need to be there, because they're not subject to the central procure, or DOE is not subject to the Central Procurement Act, is, only covers half, maybe on the, on the GSA side, and that's for goods and services, but definitely not capital. So, I would, I would object to removing the Department of Public Works.
Time, well, let's take a few minutes. The legislature stands and reassess for a few minutes. Senator Ada, and I understand there's an amendment being proffered by the minority leader, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, the conversations all day, almost all day yesterday, I think, that it was with regards to this bill. It centered around, you know, some of the concerns that many, I, along with several of our colleagues here, on some of the issues with regards to, you know, the, the, removing some of the restrictions with, with regards to the procurement. But I think that through the whole discussion and the process, one of the things that was very evident is, is it wasn't necessarily the procurement that was the concern, it was basically the protests. You know, as was mentioned yesterday by, by the good senator and the former speaker from, from Baragada, is that, you know, if, if the Department of Education just really got on its duffs, they have, really, they can be able to do these things and put these things out by April, and if things start to roll and everything, we will be able to meet those deadlines. So, is it really, is it really an issue with regards to the procurement process? I, along with, again, several of my colleagues, have an issue with regards to relaxing some of those provisions. Because of not only the precedence that it set, but then in as far as the consistency, the concerns, and as far as whether or not the rulings or the, the, the decisions to waive are going to be consistent from one contract to the next. And so, without having to toy with all of that, is, the amendment that I proffer here is not necessarily, is, is basically to delete that whole section of the bill that basically deals with the procurement, and replace it with a restriction on the protests. And basically, setting the parameters and setting the guidelines with regards to how the protest was going to be dealt with, if there was going to be a protest in the procurement of it. So, what the bill, what my amendment basically is, is to delete and replace section two of the bill, and then now for it to read section two, a new 5220 is added to Title Five of the Guam Code Annated to Read 5220, Restriction on Protest for Procurements Funded with 2009 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act monies, and the language that's there. And basically, the language that, that is provided there is the same language that we used in part two, with the language that we had used for the JFK contracts. So, that recognizing that if there is a protest, the process still continues. It doesn't null, it doesn't nullify, it doesn't terminate, it doesn't end that, it continues. And the project continues to move on. I think that by providing this, it provides, first off, again, the Department of Education continues, and if they do their jobs properly, do it right, they're able to get out their RFPs, all of their RFPs, by April, they'd be able to meet the deadlines for not only the completion, but also the deadlines set by, by the Reinvestment Act. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the Blas amendment, anybody wish to be heard? Any senators wish to be heard on the Blas amendment? Is there objection to the Blas amendment? That one is still in, in abeyance right now, until Senator Tom comes back. We're on the Blas amendment. Any objection? Hearing none. Anybody else wish to be heard on the main bill at this point? The clerk has reminded me three times that we have the Ada amendment that was being proffered on behalf of the speaker, and...
And, and I, I'd just like to say that since we've deleted that section, then there's no need for the Ada Juan Pat amendment.
Okay, so, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because the, I, the clerk was concerned that that was still sitting. Okay.
Thank you then, very much.
Any other, no. Any other senators wish to be heard on the, on the main motion now, since we've addressed all the amendments that were being made? Madam Speaker, did you wish to address us on something that was...
No, just to give you, I just, I just wanted to provide additional information anyway, too, because it was brought up yesterday about what projects we're looking at, and I just want to share that information. I was able to, to reach the superintendent early this morning, and she sent, of course, her attorney here and the third-party fiduciary agent, and I, they have given me a, a copy of about, like, eight other projects specifically that we, that we know of with Sodexo project recommendations using the ARIF funds and as of February nine, 2011. And some of those are the Southern High School Fine Arts Auditorium of $3.5 million. The Southern Gymnasium is $1.5 million. Roofing for the thirty-six schools is $12 million. Windows and doors is about $18 million. The fire alarm and public address system is about $4.5 million. Miscellaneous electrical, which will be upgrading and repairing components for rooftop air conditioning, $4 million. HVAC, that's miscellaneous air conditioning, rerouting refrigeration lines displaced by new windows, about $5 million. Plumbing, bathroom upgrades of $7.5 million, other contingencies of $4 million, total of about $60 million. There's the jobs grants of about $20 million, and already, $8 million has been drawn down, and the remainder will be spent within the timelines. The SF SF funds, a total of $75 million. Eight million has been slotted for the third party, $5 million for the financial management system, $5 million for STEM building improvements, and STEM for everyone is the science, technology, and engineering, and engineering and math program, and GW has been identified to pilot that program. $2 million for SLIP, those are school improvement programs, and about half a million for Save Schools Drug-Free and Bullying, and $48 million total CIP for school construction, and then the remaining will be, will go towards school technology. So, I just wanted to share that information with everyone. And lastly, basically, I'd just like to, I mean, I, I realize everyone's concern, and I couldn't help but quote, I'm not going to say who's the one that said it, is that, you know, we don't, we don't trust, you know, a DOE, and it looks like the only ones we can trust ourselves. But sometimes, in cases like this, is that we have, and I always feel, is that we have individuals in place, professionals in place, in the government, throughout the government, and we're going to have to trust that they would do their jobs. And, and our job is not to be the, the cop that's going to be over the shoulder of whoever it is who will be cutting the RFPs, or making the awards, or doing the inspections, because all the different departments and agencies are in place to do this, just that. So, I'm asking my colleagues to, to please support this bill. Granted, it's not what everyone would like it to be. I, I realize that the department is, is going to work, going to have to work really hard in, in building, you know, it's the trust and confidence that we would want. We want accountability and transparency, and we all know that a third-party fiduciary agent is in place to ensure that, from USDOE, to ensure that there's no waste or fraud or misuse of federal funds. And, and we're really hoping that, of course, that that would happen, and that, you know, they would truly prove us wrong. I would love to see that actually happen. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Is that your closing in the motion to move the bill to voting file? On the motion to move forty-eight to the voting file, any objection? All right, forty-eight's in voting file. Madam Speaker, I look to you to direct me on which the next bill is.
Since I'm down here, can I just do real quickly, Bill, what's the number? Fifty-five, is that what it is?
All right. Bill number fifty-five.
Uh, fifty-five.
I have to adhere to my boss.
I figure since I'm down here, fifty-five. Actually, I mean, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill fifty-five in the third reading file, and I have a very, very, very brief discussion on it.
Please proceed.
What Bill fifty-five really is asking for, and it's just a, a change in a very specific date or week of the month for senior citizens, that's not what it is. I'm looking at my chairman here. I'm so sorry. Can I withdraw that again? What's the number? Oh, forty-seven. Oh, so sorry. I was counting on my chairman over here. Okay, so, Mr. Speaker.
All right.
Correction.
The chair stands corrected. We are now dealing with Bill number forty-seven.
Thank you. Okay, Bill forty-seven. Bill forty-seven is just really changing the date, the time, rather, or the date, yes, of the week in which Senior Citizens Day will be celebrated, and actually sponsored and co-hosted, I mean, hosted by the legislature. And we were running into these problems several times, where we're not able to get it specifically on that third Wednesday of the month, and we, because we're always having to compete with everything else that's going on. So, we wanted just to say that since that is Senior Citizens Month, that then we will celebrate it on the month of May, each year thereafter.
On Bill forty-seven, any other senators wish to be heard?
And, and one, there you said, I'd like to please add Senator Munia Barnes, the second cosponsor, and the chairman, Senator Rodriguez, as a third cosponsor. Thank you very much.
Okay. Forty, so, any others wish to be heard on Bill number forty-seven? There's a motion to add the two cosponsors. Any objection? On the most, on the, anybody else wish to be heard on forty-seven? Any objection to moving forty-seven down to the voting file? Hearing none.
Okay. So, wait. Okay, so, item, yes, item eleven, Bill number thirty-seven dash thirty-one. And the author, thirty-seven. I recognize Senator Guthers.
This will be very brief. Bill thirty-seven is a very short bill, and basically what it does, it simply removes administrative oversight of the animal shelter currently operated by the gain organization back to the Department of Agriculture from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. If you recall, in the last legislature, because of some logistical issues with the Department of Agriculture in releasing the monies in a timely fashion to the shelter operator, the legislature agreed to move the administrative management of the shelter over to the Department of Public Health and Social Services. But we discovered that there was a memorandum of agreement between Agriculture and the shelter operator, and there wasn't one with Public Health. And at the request of both the Department of Agriculture and the shelter operators, the gain organization, and with the concurrence of the new administration, I developed this bill to return the shelter oversight to the Department of Agriculture. And we have gotten a commitment from the new administration that they will, in fact, release the monies to the shelter operator in a timely fashion, so that they can meet the requirements to operate the shelter. There were some, I guess, some personality issues in the last Department of Agriculture. Very difficult for the gain organization to get the funds that this legislature authorized for the operation of the shelter released to them. But I think we have that resolved now, and with the support of the, all parties involved, this bill was developed. So, I would like to ask my colleagues to please support this bill, and request that it be on third reading for discussion, and also later for consideration. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. On the motion, does anyone would like to speak on it? So, on the motion then to send Bill number, I'm sorry, Senator, did you raise your hand? Oh, okay. So, on the motion then to send Bill thirty-seven, oh, Senator Pangolinan on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to state for the record that, that this was something that we had advised in, by our committee, because of the, we knew that the transfer of the authority, as well as the MOU rested with Agriculture, and so, I certainly support it, because it, it does return it to its proper place, to allow the execution and the disbursement of those funds for the purposes, for the intended purposes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. So, on the motion then to send Bill thirty-seven to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. We are in substitute Bill number fifty-five, and, and I recognize then the chairman, Senator Dennis Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill is really very simple. But first of all, I wanted to just thank my eight other colleagues that agreed with me in, in cosponsoring this bill. But it's really simple. It gives authorization to the Guam Memorial Hospital to offer private, to offer private food vendors the opportunity into, enter into contracts, to, to operate a snack bar, restaurant, or other food service activities. You know, this, this really does several things. It gives the... It gives the doctors, nurses, and the guests who come to the hospital an option after the cafeteria hours to, to have somewhere to go, you know, to get their cup of coffee, get something, you know, eat. And so, before we go on, I just, I don't know if this is the right time, Madam Speaker, but I wanted to make something very clear because during the public hearing, there were some concerns from the employees of the dietetic services there that maybe this authorization would, would replace, would replace them. And we made it very clear in the intent of the bill that that's not the case. The in-house, the inpatient services will still remain, which is very important. And so this one really is for the, is for the general public and for the staff and management there to utilize. So I wanted to make a, a simple amendment to page two. Is that when I can do it now, Madam Speaker? Okay, page two, line ten. I want to delete the word "dietetic" and replace it with "food." So say "food services."
Can you give, I'm sorry, line, speech to what line?
Line ten.
Line ten, okay.
Delete the word "dietetic."
Dietetic?
And replace with "food."
Okay, "food," replace with "food." Okay, so on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Another amendment on page two, line fifteen, replacing the word "dietetic" with "food" as well. And Madam Speaker, that just makes it crystal clear now that we're not, we're not replacing the dietetic services at the hospital. And so this is simply to give the hospital that opportunity to go out and lease out some space there for a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, or whatever the, the hospital management sees fit.
On that, on that amendment then, on page two, line fifteen, to delete "dietetic" and add "food" without any objections, so ordered. Okay, so, was there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? There being none, so the motion then to send Bill fifty-five dash thirty-one to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Okay, with, okay, so we've sent all of the bills down then to the third reading file. Now, yes, it's almost five, but we have, there was a request, Senator Esposito on the, on the confirmations, if you can take us there.
Before I do that, Madam Speaker, the vice speaker has handed me a resolution thirty-one dash thirty-one to which you're the main sponsor, and it's relative to the appointment of Ms. Judy Flores, Ph.D., to serve as an alternate director of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. I know this matter was requested of you by the current GBB board, so it's, to the legislature's alternate representative to that board will be recognized. So I, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that this resolution be placed in the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you. Can you also put in the consent calendar for Mayor Carol Tayama as an appointment by the governor for the mayor's council to be in the GBB board, from the mayor's, yes? For also consent from the legislature.
If we're, if the governor's leaving it to us, then we, okay, so I, so again, I move, also I move on to, but there's no resolution?
Uh, no, it's just a letter here. I can give you a copy. So wait, so on that motion then to place on the consent calendar for legislative consent of Dr. Judy Flores to serve as an alternate member of GBB Board of Directors without any objections, so ordered.
And my next motion is to also, I guess, just by motion, how do I do this?
We're going to take a brief recess.
My next, notwithstanding the House rules, motion is to place the governor's appointment My next, notwithstanding the House rules, motion is to place the governor's appointment of Mayor Carol Tayama to serve as a member of the Guam Visitors Board of, Bureau Board of Mayor Carol Tayama to serve as a member of the Guam Visitors Board of, Bureau Board of Directors in the consent calendar. of Directors in the consent calendar.
Okay, without any objections, so ordered. Okay, without any objections, so ordered.
And I, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go to the consent calendar And I, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go to the consent calendar for purposes of moving the two items that we just placed there both into the voting for purposes of moving the two items that we just placed there both into the voting file. file.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Okay, are we, oh, can we call the other members that are not here then? Okay, are we, oh, can we call the other members that are not here then?
Madam Speaker? Madam Speaker? Oh, I guess we're going to vote then, right? Oh, I guess we're going to vote then, right?
Yes, and that's why I like to call for the members. Yes, and that's why I like to call for the members. Senator Blas, Senator Ada, Senator Guthers, Blashes, Tom Ada. Senator Blas, Senator Ada, Senator Guthers, Blashes, Tom Ada. So we'll take a brief recess until the members come in. So we'll take a brief recess until the members come in.
My next, notwithstanding the House rules, motion is to place the governor's appointment of Mayor Carol Tayama to serve as a member of the Guam Visitors Board of, Bureau Board of Directors in the consent calendar.
Okay, without any objections, so ordered. Okay, so we've sent all of the bills down then to the third reading file. Now, yes, it's almost five, but we have, there was a request, Senator Esposito on the, on the confirmations, if you can take us there.
Before I do that, Madam Speaker, the vice speaker has handed me a resolution thirty-one dash thirty-one to which you're the main sponsor, and it's relative to the appointment of Ms. Judy Flores, Ph.D., to serve as an alternate member of GBB Board of Directors without any objections, so ordered. And my next motion is to also, I guess, just by motion, how do I do this?
We're going to take a brief recess.
My next, notwithstanding the House rules, motion is to place the governor's appointment of Mayor Carol Tayama to serve as a member of the Guam Visitors Board of, Bureau Board of Directors in the consent calendar.
Okay, without any objections, so ordered.
And I, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that resolution number thirty be pulled from the voting file and placed in the second reading file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, then, as a notwithstanding motion, I move that we go to the second reading file.
Okay, on that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, resolution thirty this morning was placed in the consent calendar, and then from the consent calendar, it went to the voting file. Because there was an expression made that, there was a request made that we discuss this resolution on the floor, I'm extremely happy to comply because this resolution is relative to urging the Department of Defense and in particular, the Department of the Navy to add a fifth pillar to the recently developed four pillars plan for the purpose of properly addressing the needs and requirements of both the federal government and the people of Guam relative to the ongoing buildup of military forces. Everything in this resolution, Madam Speaker, is what I believe to be the current policy of the thirty-first Guam Legislature. Granted, those resolutions were passed in the thirtieth legislature. I'm of the opinion that unless a senator would introduce a resolution to either amend those resolutions or repeal those resolutions or change the direction or policy in its entirety, then another resolution should be introduced and then we would address it and take those concerns from there. Having been in this legislature for six weeks now, no resolution has been made up to that effect, so the policy still stands. And the policy of this legislature, Madam Speaker, in dealing with the military buildup is that we have to address the past historical injustices in console, in simultation to addressing this massive military buildup. There are certain positions that we've taken that are consistent with our resolutions that we passed, resolution two seventy-five, which was response to the draft environment impact statement, and then resolution four four four, which was a response to the final economic impact statement. Madam Speaker and I want to commend and recognize the new members of this legislature that have been, that have took it upon themselves to bring themselves up to speed by reading those resolutions and, and agreeing with what the policy ought to be for the people of Guam. As you know, the policy was developed as a result of a series of public hearings that we had well into the wee hours of the morning. And it's really developed based on what the people of Guam have said that we should address. It's also based on the six principles, Madam Speaker, that we have to address self-determination, political status, war reparations, unreturned ancestral lands, cleanup of DOD-generated environmental hazards, investigation and treatment of serious health problems resulting from exposure to DOD-generated environmental hazards. These are the six areas to which the administration, to which the Congresswoman, and to which all members of the legislature has agreed to. And when we had our meeting with Secretary Work here in the legislature, he outlined for us that the Department of Defense is approaching this military buildup with four pillars. The first pillar is One Guam, in which DOD acknowledges and addresses the strain the buildup places on Guam's infrastructure. The second pillar is Green Guam, in which DOD understands, supports, and makes accommodations relative to the emphasis the people of Guam place on protecting environmental treasures. The third pillar, Madam Speaker, is Cultural Sensitivity, in which DOD agrees to round-the-clock unimpeded access to the ancient Chamorral Pocket Village and cave cultural and historical sites. And net negative DOD footprint is their fourth pillar, in which DOD plans for better utilization of the approximately thirty percent of Guam's land now under their control so that they can return underutilized land to the government of Guam and have a similar footprint than is now the case. What we're saying with this resolution is that we have to have a fifth pillar, and that fifth pillar is to address the longstanding historical injustices, to include inequitable funding caps on Medicaid and other federally mandated public assistance programs, reimbursement to the government of Guam for all earned income tax credits paid or owed to Guam tax filers, and a commitment to fund all future UITC payment obligations, the full reimbursement to the government of Guam for the impact costs of the compacts of free association, inclusion of the supplemental security income program for the disabled, exemption from the Jones Act, which continues to adversely impact Guam's cost of living and which applies fully only to Guam among all U.S. insular areas, promoting growth in Guam's tourism-based economy by authorizing a Guam-only visa waiver program for visitors and by including visitors from the Philippines, Russia, and the People's Republic of China. And so I'm presenting this resolution to us, Madam Speaker, for consideration, to you for consideration, again, all consistent with the positions we've taken in resolution two seventy-five dash thirty and four 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 dash thirty. And in this resolution, on page seven, line eleven, this is a position to which our good colleague, the good gentleman from Baragada, has taken and it's captured again here and stated over and over, because we can't just have them commit to these things in writing. As the governor believes, I'm trying, as you said, I'm trying to get Secretary Work to put these things in writing. But we know that if, if there's anything in writing that deviates from the record decision, it's just non-binding. And so we're staying on page seven, line eleven, whereas by taking all of these historical injustices into consideration, Illettori believes that the DOD should move forward to rescind the record decision, issue an amended final environmental impact statement to reflect the issues herein described, and inclusive of all five pillars, allow for an adequate public review and comment period before issuing an amended rod and requiring a revised programmatic agreement. And so in passing this resolution, I believe, Madam Speaker, it's not inconsistent with everything that we've already done. And as we are aware, the governor has invited several of us to join him in Washington, D.C. that there's another perspective. There's another perspective that's different from the perspective being espoused by the administration where they believe that the buildup should happen at all costs, whereas our position is consistently been that this buildup has to be done right. And so, that is exactly what the buildup chair has done over the last term and beginning in this term, and this is really consistent with what this resolution is all about. And so, I ask our colleagues to support this, so that Senator Guthers, so that Minority Leader Frank Blass Jr., and so that myself would have something to present as we meet with these high-ranking officials, and we convey this message on behalf of the people of Guam. So I thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution, and I'm hoping that we can have unanimous consent, and so that all of our voices will be collectively addressed in this resolution, and so we can say with all certainty that this resolution was unanimously adopted by all members of the Guam Legislature. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Esposito. On the motion, Resolution 30, if anyone would like to speak on it. Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't object to what we want to add that have been embodied in previous resolutions by this body. What I object to is the adoption of the four pillars, so that now the Department of Defense is going to define what's acceptable to the people of Guam. We're saying, in my humble opinion, in my perspective of this resolution, we are saying to the Department of Defense, everything's okay now with your four pillars if you add these, the fifth pillar. Well, I don't think everything's okay with the four pillars. And it says here, with the adoption of the four pillars, it is only a first step. Well, I don't want to adopt the four pillars. That's the Department of Defense's four pillars, not the people of Guam's four pillars. That's my objection to this resolution, Madam Speaker. So now, I'm just going to go, we have been fighting to get them to accept our position, and now we're just going to accept their position as being good for us? What happened? What did we sell out to? A trip to Washington? That's what I look at here. That's what I see here, Madam Speaker. And I don't agree with that. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Senator Guthers.
Madam Speaker, I just wanted to take exception to that last phrase, "a trip to Washington"? Quite a personal privilege. You know, I really don't want to go to Washington, but I'm going because of the buildup. I have no interest in going somewhere that's so far away, and so cold, and a place I'm not used to going to. I've been to Washington twice in my lifetime, and I always tell myself, "I'll never go back again," because it's too cold for me. This is not a pleasure trip. It's going to be an agonizing trip going there and coming back. So, it's not something that's going to be fun. It's going to be a lot of work in a short period of time. But I think it's important to be part of this discussion, when the Governor's there, to give them a perspective on what this legislature thinks and what we have agreed to in this legislature with respect to this buildup. So I just want to take exception to that last phrase. I'm sure it wasn't said in vain, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. On the motion? Does anyone like to speak on it? Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To the good Senator, retiring Speaker from Baragada, I can understand his frustration, and I agree that we do not want to be subject or told, or agreeable to terms that we're not in control of, or that we did not homageate ourselves. But I do have to agree with, you know, the fact that at least the language is in there that says that that's a first step. And I don't want to lose the value and the benefit of all of the other good items that have been placed in this resolution that I put my signature to. And so, I just wanted to point out that it is a good start, and I want to point out that the Senator from Agony Heights had pointed that out as well, that at least, we know that's a starting point, but the value, I believe, of the items and the information contained in this resolution, even though we may disagree on who sets the terms, I still believe the content is valuable and something that should be brought to Washington as the Governor has invited several members of this body to go there and to ensure that our voice is heard. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. And anybody else on the motion? Senator Esposito?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to quickly close, I just want to allay the fears that this resolution is attempting to adopt the four pillars. I think that that whereas clause was taken out of context, and if you read what the clause says, "The adoption of the four pillars is only a first step in the development of a working relationship between the people of the government of Guam and the DOD, and Illettori is supportive of the concept of this approach outlined by Secretary Work. However, details must still be worked out in each area." You know, this legislature, Madam Speaker, worked so hard, particularly the buildup committee chair, myself with the Federal Territory Relations, yourself as Speaker of the Legislature, the Minority Leader in pushing issues of compact impact, the good Speaker Panglinen himself in making sure that businesses that are set up on Guam for the military buildup are paying on their taxes. We all worked very hard collectively, individually, and collectively to make sure that this military buildup is done right, and I'm very, very careful about these things. We're not adopting the four pillars that they're telling us. We're telling them that it's only a first step, and details must still be worked out in each area. I mean, if there's a way to tweak that language so that we don't say we don't want the resolution at all, is there a way, if there's a way to tweak the language so that we get buy-in by all 15 members of this legislature? We agreed in principle that there's one issue that all of us have to be on board with, including on board with the administration, with the Congresswoman, and so far, those are the six areas. We don't agree with the administration in their approach to the military buildup. We never agreed with the previous administration in their approach, and we have some concerns with the Congresswoman's position with respect to the buildup. But from the legislative standpoint, Madam Speaker, this resolution is not endorsing the four pillars. It's saying details must still be worked out in each area. Not going to ramrod anything that would bind us. I'm very careful about that. I'm also very careful that when we go to these meetings in Washington, D.C., that we have some kind of boundaries to which we would be speaking with these high-ranking military officials and the federal government, so that way, we would be able to articulate a very consistent position. And so, I'm hoping that what I said just allayed some of those concerns with the approach with this resolution, and I'm hoping that all members of this legislature support Resolution Number 30. With that, I move that it be placed back in the voting file.
On the motion to place Resolution Number 30 in the third reading file?
Well, I guess I can, before I make that, before you gabble that motion, my staff just handed me something, Madam Speaker. We can consider, after the word "adoption..."
What page?
Page three. Can say, to include the words "by the federal government..."
What line?
Line one, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
So it reads, "The adoption by the federal government of the four pillars is only a first step in the development." So to add "by the federal government," you know, we're clear that it's the federal government adopting the four pillars. And then on line four, to add in the word before concept, add in the word "basic," is supportive of the basic concept of this approach outlined by Secretary Work. So it's just a little bit more clear. And if I can offer these amendments, I have...
Let's take the First Amendment. Whereas the adoption of, at the words "by the federal government" of the four pillars, right?
Yeah.
By the federal government.
By the federal government.
Yes. So it reads, whereas the adoption by the federal government of the four pillars. On that amendment, any discussion? No discussion? So ordered. And the second one's in line four, that was a supportive of the, at "basic," so be supportive of the basic concept of this approach. On that amendment, without any objections, and so ordered. Any other?
So on my motion to place the resolution in the voting file.
On the motion to place Resolution Number 30 on the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered.
And my next motion, Madam Speaker?
Yes.
I move that we vote on Resolutions 30 and 31 without engrossment, as well as Bills 37 and 47 without engrossment, and those appointments which you deemed have complied with that statutory requirement regarding filing the Guam, with the Guam Legislature Commission.
Okay. On that motion, any objections? Objections, so ordered. Senator Hatta, did you, or Senator Blass?
Yes. It's been... Oh, 48.
Yes. Because we're still in motions.
Maybe while we're waiting, where we left off, I believe Senator Blass, 48, he's working on another amendment, but where we left off last was the question was raised as to whether it was appropriate to delete Director of Public Works of having to, of having Public Works be signatory to the waiver, and...
Oh, no. You have to make a motion notwithstanding the House rules to...
I did already, and then we, I made the motion to delete...
No, no, no. We're, it's on 48, it's down in third reading. You want to bring it back up.
Okay. So I move then to bring, notwithstanding the House rules, to move back 48 to second reading.
Yeah. Okay. So, there's something else, yeah. That section's not there, you're right, I know, but there are other questions, I understand, from Senator Blass. Yes, Section 3 was deleted.
Yeah.
Completely.
Oh, Section 2?
Yes. Gone.
Oh, well, he's going to replace it back again, so I'll just wait till Senator Blass.
Okay, so the motion then should be, is that notwithstanding the House rules, would be then to take Bill 47 out of third reading and place it...
48.
I mean, 48, and place it on second reading.
Okay, so are you saying that on the Section 2, line 16, that was deleted from a previous amendment?
Yes, and replaced. The entire section was replaced.
Okay, so now I need to see what his amendment is.
Yes. Yes, but, and, so then...
Oh, he's working, he's working on a new one.
Yes, so that's why you have to make the motion then, notwithstanding...
What I'm fixing, please.
Wait, so can we make the motion then, notwithstanding, then to bring it back up? Because, notwithstanding the House rules...
Notwithstanding the House rules, move that Bill 48 be moved back up to the second reading.
To second reading. On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Okay, so now, okay, so then, yes, we're...
We're waiting for his amendment.
We're going to take a brief recess. We're going to take a brief recess. Senator Blass, it's on the second reading, so you're going to have to motion to place it in the third.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank you with regards to substitute bill number forty-eight. I move to, move substitute bill forty-eight to the third reading, where I'd like the opportunity to speak on it, please.
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, substitute bill forty-eight, initially in our discussions, and one of the amendments that I had proffered, this was to basically address the issue with regards to, to the procurement process that is occurring as a result of the ARIF funds to the Department And as a result of the discussion, again, one of the areas concerned, the primary area of concern with this is the issue with regards to the protests. We recognize as a body that we didn't want to basically give too much flex, we didn't want to alter in as far as the flexibility, or in as far as the standards set for the procurement process, recognizing there is sufficient time to be able to provide, put The concern was with regards to the procurement process, or the protest process, and recognizing that that is where actually it may slow down. And so what we wanted to do was keep those measures that were in place that would, that would keep the integrity of the, of the process of the procurement, but not bog the process, not bog the, the process down in as far as the performance of the contracts or obtaining And in the, initially at the proposed, the amendment that would basically address with the protest process, the concern and the issue, and I want to thank Ms. Rebecca Perez from the Department of Education, as long as the, both are legal consuls, in being able to draft the, the, now, an amendment to the, that I would like to provide, to, to offer, in replacing the language that was proffered earlier with regards to the protest procedures, deleting that whole section and replacing it with this now new section, which, and I want to thank Madam Speaker, truth be told, this wasn't a regurg, or this wasn't something that was, was just thought up, we want to thank you, it was a matter of just looking through the history of the process of the bill and taking some of the language that you yourself had provided in, in, in bill forty-eight in its original form. And so taking that, that language, I think it helped to satisfy some of the concerns with regards to the protests, moving this process along with regards to the protests, but also protecting in as far as the integrity of, of the procurement itself, recognizing that if there is an area with regards to fraudulent, fraudulent award or fraudulent practice, that the government still has the opportunity to stop the award and, and to move that process over. We didn't, we didn't want, we don't want in any way to say that although the award was fraudulent, or there maybe have been some, some, some legitimate questions, if you will, with regards to the award, that despite that we have to move along. No, we want to make sure that the integrity is there, if there is fraudulent, if there's fraud, there was fraud, or there's some discrepancies that were found that need to be addressed, it has to be addressed before the project moves forward. This now amendment offered, offers that protection, offers the, the, the process in which the protest can, can proceed, but more importantly, offers the opportunity for these projects to get done in a timely fashion, and, and being able to deal with, with any protest or any concerns that people may have with regards to the procurement Thank you very much.
On the amendment, which is to delete then what's in the bill, which is the section, in section two, which is five-two-two-zero restriction on protest, to delete that in its entirety, and then to replace it with section five-four-two-five-A protest procedures for procurement. On the amendment, Senator Pangina, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, just a couple of minor issues. I, I think on, for example, on, on section five-four-two-five-A, where you use the word prospective vendor contractor or service provider, the third line in that, so that any rules promulgated, if an actual or prospective vendor contractor or service provider, I think maybe that we, what I would suggest maybe is we use the word that was used in the lower section, and that is a non-selected vendor contractor, because prospective, I, I don't know what that, I don't know how far that can go, whether everybody that picked up a packet but didn't submit, you know, so I, I think maybe, and they use the word non-selected vendor in the bottom, so maybe just to be consistent, that should probably read, if an actual or non-selected vendor contractor or service provider is agreed.
So to delete then prospective vendor, and replace it with non-selected.
Non-selected vendor, because that's the word they use in the bottom portion. The decision, and to all other non-selected bidders or offerers, so I would assume that those are the same people, the prospective vendor, they really mean the non-selected bidder or offerer? That's what I'm assuming here. I may be completely off, but wrong, but.
So we want to use then non-selected bidders or offerers instead of vendors? Which is the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe that's just, I'll just bring that up for a question and leave it. And, and then the, the, the word "the" should probably be capitalized on the last underline in that first paragraph, where it says, "ARIF funds in whole and part, period, then the protest shall be submitted to the public auditor." I mean, I know the public auditor, we hold her in high regards, but I don't think she rises to the level of "the."
Okay. So, okay, so let, let's take the, the, first of all, on line three, where it says prospective vendor.
I would think that's non-selected vendor.
Okay, so we're going to delete then prospective.
With the word, I put non-selected.
And replace it with the word non-selected.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm pretty confident that's who they mean.
Okay. On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, of course, would we capitalize the word "the"?
Capitalize "the," okay.
And to change "the" to "the."
Okay. So on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, the bottom, on, after the word number four in that sentence, the second line there, in writing, "with no more than ten days," I think within, no more than ten days? Or, so that would be with.
Within.
No more than ten days of receipt of the protest.
No more than ten days of receipt of the protest. On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then the second line would be, "a copy of the written decision shall be mailed using certified mail." I think that's our normal process. I don't think there'll be any delay by requiring the use of, of certified, that probably strengthens our case.
Okay. So to add certified, using certified.
Shall be noted, shall be, a written decision shall be mailed using certified mail.
Using certified mail, on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, I'm a slow reader, I haven't finished yet.
so maybe just to be consistent, that should probably read, if an actual or non-selected vendor, contractor, or service provider is aggrieved.
So to delete then prospective vendor and replace it with non-selected?
Non-selected vendor, because that's the word they use in the bottom portion. The decision, and to all other non-selected bidders or offers, so I would assume that those are the same people, the prospective vendor, they really mean the non-selected bidder or offer? That's what I'm assuming here. I may be completely off, but wrong, but.
So we want to use then non-selected bidders or offers instead of vendors? Which is the?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Maybe that's just, I'll just bring that up for a question and leave it. And then the, the word "the" should probably be capitalized on the last underline in that first paragraph, where it says, "RFPs in whole and part," period, then "the protest shall be submitted to the public auditor." I mean, I know the public auditors, we hold her in high regards, but I don't think she rises to the level of "the."
Okay. So, okay, so let's take the, first of all, on line three, where it says prospective vendor.
I would think that's non-selected vendor.
Okay, so we're going to delete then prospective and replace it with the word non-selected.
Yeah, because I'm pretty confident that's who they mean.
Okay, on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, of course, would we capitalize the word "the"?
Capitalize "the," okay.
And to change "the" to "the."
Okay, so on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then the bottom, after the word number four in that sentence, the second line there, in writing, "with no more than 10 days," I think, "within no more than 10 days," or, so that would be with.
Within.
No more than 10 days of receipt of the protest.
No more than 10 days of receipt of the protest. On that amendment, without any objections, ordered.
And then the second line would be, "a copy of the written decision shall be mailed using certified mail." I think that's our normal process. I don't think there'll be any delay by requiring the use of certified, that probably strengthens our case.
Okay, so to add certified, using certified.
Shall be noted, shall be, a written decision shall be mailed using certified mail.
Using certified mail on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, I'm a slow reader, I haven't finished yet.
Yes, after the number four, one, two, three.
And one, two, three.
And one, two, three. Can, can one of you make this, on second line, where it says, "after reinvestment act monies," that to add the words allotted to the GDOE, because it's specifically for DOE?
Yes, are we done with that?
For that.
Very good.
Yes, he's reading some more, so I'll go back to him again, so can you go ahead and do that then?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, Madam Speaker, if I can go ahead and move to include, in the title it says protest procedure for procurement funded with 2009 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act monies allotted to the Guam Department of Education.
Guam, yes, thank you very much. And can that also be done on the, one, two, three, four?
And that will be done on ninth.
Lines down, by the, before the 2009?
Right, by the 2009 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act monies allotted to the Guam Department of Education.
Okay. Okay, so on those, the same language, without any objections, so ordered. Anybody else? So, on the motion then, is there any other, anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Going once? And, so Senator Blas, on your motion then to?
On my motion, and send it on the third reading. Once again, I want to thank again legal counsel for the Guam Department of Education, my legal, our legal counsel minority, Senator, former Senator Jimmy Aspallon. And I want to thank the good speaker from Baragao. You know, we're writing with regards to some of the areas that he provided the amendments, and yeah, I didn't want to idolize a certain public figure, but thank you for.
So, and anybody else who want to be co-sponsors?
And, yes, and you know, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank my, you know, the good senator from Manila, and my uncle to the side here. Okay, we'll go ahead and recognize it from the.
So, on the motion then to make, Senator Tom Ada and Senator Frank Blas is second and third co-sponsors, without any objections, so ordered.
The other senator. Thank you, thank you very much.
On the motion then to send?
Motion to say the third reading?
Third reading then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Okay, where is the majority leader, because now we're going to vote on the appointments? Okay, so we're, we're ready to, the motion then to now?
I already made an earlier motion.
I know, but we, we have? Oh, Tom Ada and Frank Blas. So, I'm sorry, okay, so your motion was then that to vote on resolutions 30 and 31 on engrossed, and bills 37 and 47, and all the other confirmation?
Without engrossment.
Without engrossment.
The appointments to which you gave your eligible to be voted on.
Okay, so, I'm going to go ahead and start with the appointments. So, on the appointment then of Ms. Rosie Ann Blas to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Directors, on favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Rosie Ann Blas received 13, wait, right, so there's only one missing, just Senator, just the vice speaker this time. So it's 14, 14 votes. Somebody needs to do that motion. So can we excuse the vice speaker?
Yes, for everything.
Madam Speaker, I move that the vice speaker be excused from voting.
Thank you very much, without any objections, so ordered. So on the votes then for Ms. Rosie Ann Blas, she has received 14 votes and one excused absence. Ms. Rosie Ann Blas is duly appointed by this legislature. On the appointment of Mr. David J. Soblon to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Directors, on favor, please raise your hand. Mr. David J. Soblon received 12 votes, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Arlene P. Bredaloo to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, on favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Bredaloo received 14 votes, so she is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. David J. John to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, please raise your hand. Mr. David John received 14 votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Ramona L. E. Jones to serve as a member to the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, please raise your hand, if you're in favor. Ms. Ramona Jones received 14 votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. George Chu to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, please raise your hand. Mr. George Chu received 13 votes, he is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Marquita Flores Taitegui to serve as Director of the Department of Agriculture, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Cruz.
Senator Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Guthertts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Penglinen.
Yes.
Senator Ruspishu.
Obedience.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Wampet.
Obedience.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Vice Speaker, before we announce the vote, we are doing a roll call vote for the Director of the Department of Agriculture, Ms. Marquita Flores Taitegui. It's a roll call vote.
Let me call them back.
Can you please call, and the vice speaker?
Call, please. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Ms. Marquita Flores Taitegui is duly confirmed by this body as the Director of the Department of Agriculture, and she received 15 yea votes. On the appointment of Mr. Edward J. Calvo to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, on favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Edward J. Calvo received 15 yea votes, and he is duly confirmed by this body. By law, to, we need legislative consent for Dr. Judy Flores to serve as an alternate member to the Guam Vistors Bureau Board of Directors, on favor, please raise your hand. Dr. Flores received unanimous vote, she is duly confirmed by this body. And another, we need legislative consent for Mayor Carol Tayama to serve as a member of the GVB Board of Directors, on favor, please raise your hand. Mayor Carol Tayama received legislative consent, and she is confirmed by this body unanimously. Yes, no, we did Judy Flores and Mayor Carol Tayama. Okay, so, we are now going to vote on resolution number 30. What's the wish of the body to do a roll call vote on that? So, resolution 30, can you read it, please?
Resolution number 30, that's 31 LS, introduced by R. Z. Ruspishu, J. P. Guthertts, J. T. Wampet E. D. D., and others. Relative to urging the Department of Defense, and in particular, the Department of the Navy to add a fifth pillar to the recently developed four pillars plan for the purpose of properly addressing the needs and requirements of both the federal government and the people of Guam relative to the ongoing buildup of military forces. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Frank Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Yes.
Senator Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Guthertts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Penglinen.
Aye.
Senator Ruspishu.
Senator Ruspishu.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Obedience.
Speaker Wampet.
Obedience.
Senator Yamashita.
Resolution number 30-31 LS, received 14 yea votes, one nay. Resolution number 30-31 LS is duly adopted by this, or passed by this legislature.
Resolution number 31-31 LS, introduced by Judith T. Wampet E. D. D., Pierre Munia Barnes, B. J. F. Cruz. Relative to the appointment of Ms. Judy S. Flores, Ph. D., to serve as the alternate director of the Guam Vistors Bureau Board of Directors.
That we've done, I'm sorry. We've already voted on her, so, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so, okay, we did vote on her, we did vote on her, so. We're going to go to bill number 37.
Bill number 37-31 COR, introduced by Judith P. Guthertts. An act to repeal and reenact section 12 of chapter three, part two, Department of Public Health and Social Services, a public law 30-196 relative to funding for the government of Guam Animal Shelter, currently operated by the Guam Animals in Need, Gain, Inc. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker, I didn't understand.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Guthertts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Penglinen. Senator Ruspishu.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Obedience.
Speaker Wampet.
Obedience.
Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Bill number 37-31 COR, received 15 yea votes. Bill number 37-31 is duly passed by this committee.
Bill number 47, COR, introduced by J. T. Wampet E. D. D., Pierre Munia Barnes, D. G. Rodriguez Jr. An act amend section 1032, title one, Guam Code annotated, relative to senior citizens stay at the legislature. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Senator Duñez.
Obedience.
Senator Guthertts.
Yes.
Senator Mabini.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Obedience.
Senator Palacios.
Yes.
Senator Penglinen.
Yes.
Senator Ruspishu.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron.
Yes.
Speaker Wampet.
Obedience.
Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 47-31 COR, received 15 yea votes. Bill number 47-31 is duly passed by this body. We are going to recess until tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 to allow the clerks to engross the other bills. So, 2:00 tomorrow afternoon.